Oh, I'm good. I'm good.
Yes, please. I only need one more.
His elders count in his job.
Thanks.
Like a car because it will call back.
They actually blacked on the bridge before somebody over. We heard that they jumped over the bridge. So unless they jumped, they fell.
Right.
I think this vehicle, we've got a head water as we're going. Uh, that person just took five minutes to bring this to the rest of people. Now I'm gonna stay at White's, but I'll go see if we can get a part.
Ready for my close up? Yeah, I'll scare him.
You can hide, you can love it, you can't hide.
Buddy guys.
Ready, all right? Board? All ready in the parking lot? Shooters were amazing. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the 2:00 PM working session for the Board of Supervisors. I will call our media to order. Before I call, as before we go into our new business, I'd like to take some prerogative. We just got word from Chief Ferguson, there's been a bad accident on 288. Someone is over the bridge. A life flight is on the way, so I'd like to take a minute to just pray for that situation for anyone involved. Father Lord, we just come to you right now with an urgent request to be with the people involved and those, whether it be in the incident or responding, I'd just give a hedge of protection over them right now in your son's name, we pray. Amen. Okay. That somber note is a good indicator that what we do here is very important. That the things that we provide and the materials to protect our citizens is important. So I open it up now to our presentation discussion for the capital improvement test.
It's important.
Okay. Well, that's kind of a good segue into what I was gonna say. And Mary Ann and I were talking about this budget yesterday. In a lot of ways, this budget is much smaller than our operating budget in terms of number of lines and everything, but in a lot of ways, it's much harder because there are so many infrastructure needs out there in the county, in the schools, and there's, of course, limited ways to finance those. So, so it's, um, it's a thoughtful plan, it's a balanced plan. We, we don't just put in everything that everybody requests. We, and we rearrange things and say, hey, could we move this out this year? Could we do this? Could we do less with this? And you should have a packet in front of you that was also emailed to you. And what I think maybe would be most handy would be the sheets that are right at the front that say the five-year CIP, because that's really what we're gonna focus on. We'll show you the 25 years, but as you know, we balance the first five years and that is really gonna be our focus. And just to change in order a little bit, schools has a previous, has a commitment at three o'clock, so they will be the first to talk about their projects. So now I'm gonna turn it over.
All righty. Mary Ann? Thank you. Okay, so as Barbara said, we're looking at the CIP for FY '23, the five-year and the 25-year plan. Please let me know if you can't hear. The first year, which is FY '23, is adopted in the budget, when we adopt the budget. The five-year, we balance and you, the board approves that, and then the 25-year plan isn't necessarily balanced with revenues because that would be a little bit hard to dig, but the plan is out there for everyone to take a look at. So what do we do when we plan the CIP? We look at the life cycle of the facilities and major operating systems and equipment. This isn't about annual maintenance to keep things going. This is about when does stuff actually wear out? When does it need to be replaced? When do we need to build new? That type of thing. You know, consumer price in that's, you know, I just heard 10%. I just heard 10% on the news.
CBI.
Yep. And so at this point, I don't even know what to say about that. That's very unusual, and we certainly hope that doesn't continue over the next several years, but this is what we're dealing with at this moment. And we also take a look at existing structures versus new. Is there stuff that we can use? It's all that maybe we can reconfigure, you know, other than new. It's a, it's a general overall look at the county for 25 years. Oops. Oh, that didn't go well. Thank you. That's good. We can move on. Okay. We look at the ability to cash fund certain projects. We have general obligation debt that we borrow to do several projects. West Creek Fire Station, where we borrow some work for the Circuit Court. Goochlin High School additions and renovations, and also, of course, Goochlin Elementary, which was in the FY '22 CIP. And of course, with all that going on, we want to make sure that we're staying within our debt capacity and maintaining different textures. So this year looks a little bit different. Education doesn't have a huge piece of the pie for a request. They're very busy with Goochlin Elementary, so they have a whole lot going on from '22 that isn't necessarily reflected in new requests for '23. The biggest portion of our requests for '23 is fire and rescue, and of course, that's because their equipment is so expensive. And we also have the West Creek Fire Station here that we had moved up, which is the station we, our money for. This looks more like we're used to seeing. This is the five-year CIP. Education is a little better than half. Again, fire and rescue, a lot of expensive things going on. We're gonna start with education, and as Barbara said, the schools have a pretty critical meeting at three, so we're gonna try to move through this pretty quickly. The one thing I want to say about this is if you look at the Goochlin High no renovations line, that line is not what they requested. This is pretty much the school's request, as they requested it, with the exception of the Goochlin High no renovations line starting in FY '22. As you can see, we have that funded at a million dollars each year. That's HVAC replacements, it's, it's things to keep that building going. Building's, I think, about 20 years old, isn't it now? And so what, what they have requested in '24 is 3.1 million, in '25, 3.4 million. 1.1 million in '26 and 1.9 million in '27. We couldn't balance that with what we currently know that we're going to have or expect to have for revenues, so that's gonna be something that we're gonna have to logically follow because if that's what they need, then we'll have to figure out a way to handle that.
What was the total, if you don't mind, of the request? Have you seen the total?
Uh, the request for that line was, uh, I don't know, I'll have to add that up. We, we have about $5.7 million that's left out of the CIP for the back project.
And, and that's all? It was 11 million. 11 million. 11, 9 something.
It was 11 million.
And we, we have 5.2.
Okay, and that's, that is the all in that one line?
Yes. Yes, yes, that's right.
That was 11.2?
Um, I don't know exactly, 11. We can get to the actual request number, but...
Okay, thank you.
It was 11 something.
11,000?
11,000.
11,000?
I mean, 11,000.
Eighteen thousand nine hundred eighty-one.
Thank you.
Uh, the schools are here, and you can speak to any of these projects that, that you would like to have them speaking.
And I will add, under the new Goochlin Elementary, of course, we already allocated a lot of money to that. The 600,000 you see there is, um, we have proper money that's available to go ahead and spend, so I, I know we haven't finished our discussion on how, you know, what the new elementary school's gonna ultimately cost, but I wanted to go ahead and get that 600,000 in there because we wanna spend that proper money and, and get it in there. So assuming that you approve this, they would, that would be another 600,000 added to their current budget.
And so that's all education program money?
Correct, correct. Yeah. We now have it divided into multiple parts. We have the old, and then we have the district, but it's a combination of old and central.
But that's what that's due.
Right.
Board, questions?
I, I do have one. So we are talking about upgrading the middle school and that, and the high school. Well, actually, we're at the high school, where we were just talking about the no renovations piece. So that school is 20 years old, I think. So is that something that we should think about as we build the new elementary school 20 years out? Start putting money for resi- renovations?
I would think so.
Yes. You know, our 30-year plan, yes. That's what we've done.
Right.
We, we've shown that, you know, in 2044, that you start getting those, those large age back costs.
Right.
Which was, what's happening to us now is all our age back systems need, need to be replaced.
So they really were essentially 20-year products, if you will, when they were installed, yeah, is what you're saying.
Mr. Peterson?
I was just looking at the six-year total, not the five-year total. And 37 reported to $80,000, so carrying our side, that's pretty, pretty heavy left.
I apologize, so what is the big delta in the no renovations piece? What's being left on the table? About 5.6, 5.7. Thank you.
There's your answer.
I think he's looking for stuff.
What, what stuff is?
There, there were some large numbers in, in the request, and we talked about this in January, but ultimately, it's, it's deferring heating units, cooling units, and what is presented on the screen is, you know, is kicking the can down the road a little bit, but it's, it's all related to climate control, heating, ventilation, air conditioning. Is the difference between the $11 million and the $5 million?
Can I follow up?
No, go ahead, I'm going right around it.
Well, okay, so the 5 million doesn't cover, I mean, the heating and air conditioning, I thought that was like one of the most critical things you're looking at right now?
You know, if, if appropriated a million dollars, it's probably break the overall project into smaller segments.
But I, I think you might be thinking about the unit.
Yeah.
That's it, this year's.
Oh, okay, that's right, that big unit? Okay.
That, that is included in the FY '23 request and is, I believe, recommended to be funding, funded on the screen.
Right, right.
Cooling tower.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
So the risk there is, it's a nice to have until it's not. Some of these things that were not, that were kicking down, kicking the can, like you said.
Yeah, eventually those projects will need to be done. It's just a matter of, do they, do they go bad prior to the time that it's being funded? That's, you know, that's certainly just a difficulty of, of planning like this.
Sure.
Anyway, will, will we use any sort of resources provided to meet the highest need?
Dr. Renner, some of the stimulus monies and the down, the recovery monies, those really went to filtration and not so much to professors and HVA students, is that, is that?
Well, a lot of things, Mr. Peterson, that have been funded with federal resources would have showed up on the screen but are not as a result of those decisions that were made. So you would see higher figures on Byrd and Randolph without the use of the federal resources that we've done. So we'd be able to pick off a lot of projects that would have normally shown up. They were directly related to air quality, filtration, functionality of the, of the, of the equipment itself.
Do we, do we know if any of, and this is probably maybe a little too technical, but do we know with the upgrades that we've made, if that puts any additional strain on the current units? I know if I use the wrong kind of filter in my home unit, that's too much of a draw, then all of a sudden, I'm messing up my main, my main unit. Do we know if any of the air quality upgrades impact the performance or life cycle of our heat?
Well, what we've done is new units altogether, so the filtration upgrades will not have any impact on the, on the current units because what we did is we just replaced old for new, and so the filtration and the units will work in synchrony together.
In harmony, so to speak.
In harmony.
We get enough of that around here?
Right, so when we upgraded the filtration, we upgraded the, the power, the, you know, how much that that unit could take. So that, that was a nice thing, and we have, we have invested, hopefully, for the life of those buildings now, that we have done our last, you know, we, we've essentially replaced everything at Randolph and Byrd, and we're in very good shape for the next 15, 20 years of those schools, so...
And we did spend a fair amount of the COVID funds, the federal funds, on, on some of that as well, right?
All of that.
Right.
It did not have to hit the CIP because we used the federal money.
Exactly, right, and I think that's an important point for that, that got funded in the different funding sources versus directly from our, not from our taxpayers, but directly.
No way around.
Yeah, yeah. They'll turn back to us, okay, thank you.
Any else for schools?
We're gonna move the fire and rescue since 247 has a pressing engagement. Okay, so fire and rescue, the, the biggest things here, of course, we moved up the West Creek Fire Station, that was the general obligation bond funding, we've got that at 8.2 million dollars down at the bottom. We also have a ladder truck replacement and a tanker replacement. We had, um, actually moved the tanker replacement out of here, and Chief Ferguson said it was imperative that he have that tanker. First of all, because the tanker's replacing, I think, is not in great shape, but also it's taking two years to get equipment. So we actually reduced the public safety training center. The original request was 5,000,000 down to 80,000, so we can put the tanker in there. So those two pieces of apparatus are priorities for the fire department. We're also in a bit of a situation where we heard from the manufacturer, and the prices go up made first on this particular type of equipment. And they're saying there's a 24-month basically lead time to get it. So we may need to discuss at some point if the board approves moving the tanker and the ladder truck forward in the CIP, if we could do some sort of a purchase agreement prior to May 1st. The budget will be adopted in April, so that's something we would probably do, but I just wanted to mention that that's out there. And if you have any questions?
Yeah.
Don't get moved.
Thank you, uh, I appreciate that. I'm joined here today also by Executive Director of the Association, Martin. And certainly, she's right, you know, we looked at the CIP and we did reduce the, the money we had for the fire rescue training center. The bottom line is the equipment we respond to the scene of emergencies has to take priority over facilities, while we do need facilities in the worst way in some cases. So looking at, and there are two large items in the CIP. One is the ladder truck. The ladder truck is the same ladder truck we've had since 1993, it's 29 years old. It's stationed at Fire Station 5, and it's also starting to incur maintenance costs. We've got it serviced for 121 days plus for calendar year 2021. We have received a new ladder truck that's in the east end of the county, but we certainly have our plan, our plan is built around. We're having two ladder trucks, some of the high life safety risk occupancies that we are dealing with, and also those that have been approved and not fully opened as of yet, will require two ladder trucks if there was a resident incident at those facilities. Plus, one is a backup to the other, should one be out of service for, for maintenance or some place for mechanical repairs. In addition, with the ladder truck, you know, we, we look at what's, what's already out here. There are many homes in the county that are taller than, three stories or taller, and even some of those homes are in the west end of the county, as well as structures around the courthouse. The courthouse complex, the new courthouse is gonna be built, and you have our new school, plus everything that's here today. So we, we're hoping that we are able to get it funded. It has taken about 24 months to receive a piece of fire apparatus from down the order, and their apparatus plan, if you may recall, was, was a little bit behind to start with. We just got it on track so that we can stagger these purchases going forward and we'll pile up like we, we had in previous years. The tanker would go to Fire Station 6 in Higginsville. The tanker is a new, modern tandem axle tanker. It handles the weight of the water better, it's distributed over more axles. It also carries up over 400 gallons more water than existing tankers do. And our existing tankers, that were bought new in 2002, that are now 20 years old, are rounded tanks, elliptical type tanks, and we've gone back to the fire engine style bodies that would be carrying more hoes and ladders and more of this equipment, that vehicle would be more versatile to handle the case of emergencies.
Chief, how many of those do you buy in 2002?
We only, we bought one new tanker today.
No, no, no.
And it's six. Six. Six.
Okay, so that's, that's an example of, it was a need, so no, no bad dogs, but there was a need, so we've met it, but now we've got, they're all coming due to placement at the same time. I know we don't, we're trying to stack them. Well, as he answers the question, did you say six?
Six. Six, we bought six, and we replaced one of those, or the new tanker in 2019, received it in 2021. So we did have to replace one, one tanker to this point. Now, we'll tell you, the ladder truck was, was in the average grade, but because of what we were experiencing with the reliability of it and the maintenance and the number of days out of service, we moved it up a year and took the fire engine that was, was originally in FY '23 and put the fire engine out of here just so that we could focus on the ladder truck. We're, we are afraid that the ladder truck is gonna go into the shop, and we're, we're just one visit away from something about it causing the truck to decommission, whether the availability of a part. We've already put two transmissions in it in the course of 18 months. Thankfully, the second transmission had some warranty on it from the first one, but, but honestly, when it's, when it's in the shop at Western Branch Diesel for three months every now, we did no use of that vehicle if there's a fire emergency in town. The other, we have some other projects in the CIP. Be happy to, to talk about any of them. So don't want to tie your time up unnecessarily if you had a question, if you have an answer.
Chief, could you talk a little bit to the procurement process of, of the equipment? Like, the fact that, you know, we've contracted and things like that?
Right, so, so we try, as far as the procurement piece goes, we try to buy off of the Houston-Galluston Purchasing Cooperative agreement that, that the county, I assume, subscribes to, the cost of being a member of that. And what I can tell from talking to other departments, a lot of departments are going that route nowadays as opposed to going through a formal, formal bid process. So if, if we make that order for a piece of fire apparatus, all of the engineering has to occur, and what we're, what we're told this morning from our sales representative for Pierce Manufacturing, is it's taken anywhere from 20 to 24 months to see a fire truck and they will order it. We also remain aware this morning that the ladder truck, there's a $100,000 increase in the cost of the ladder truck as of May 1st, and there's also a $35,000 increase for the cost of the tanker as of May 1st, and then we can get price savings by some prepay options. And so if you add in the two prepay options and you get the order in before May 1st, it will save the taxpayers $199,000, just under $200,000. And so we're hopeful, we're hopeful to have the CIP pass, but also that when the budget is passed, that we can do some fast work to procurement and get that order in before May 1st to save the taxpayers and the budget for the fire rescue department with the $1,000.
You told us how much it saves the taxpayers, how much is it gonna cost the taxpayers for, for those deposits and stuff?
The, so we have, we have enough money budgeted in the CIP for the ladder truck. It's coming in at like 1.4 million.
No, no, I mean, because you're talking about, if you order in May, that's in, I'm giving my fiscal years on, but that's this year, right?
I see what you're saying.
So would we have to do a budget amendment to pay some deposit?
Yeah, we haven't exactly figured out how we would, would do it yet. First, we would need to approve this, and then we'd probably bring the contract to you, and it's a... I think the deposit is hefty, it's 1.2 million dollars on the ladder truck. And I'm not sure, I can't remember what it was on the tanker. The, the really critical thing would be is if we could get a contract. That would save us the majority of that one.
But I was, I was kind of, that's what I was kind of asking, does the contract require a deposit?
It doesn't require a deposit, so the contract was, is just sort of a letter of intent.
To lock in, to lock, we can lock in the price, the pre-increased prices?
Without doing the deposit, we don't have to.
I found my email, the prepay discount for the ladder truck is $53,677, and the prepay amount for the tanker, the prepay hit, would be $8,145. And of course, you know, I think these are firm, but this came by email and not any type of formality more than it.
But then will we have some other, we guys, I mean, I think you guys are, I'll just ask the question, but I'll leave it in y'all's hands. You also talked about there's some additional payments that need to be made, some prepayments along the way if we go that route before delivery?
I'm not aware that they were with the previous apparatus. I think we prepaid up front and then we paid at the end when the vehicle levels are obviously, our checks and balances, so sure we got what we paid for.
But it's no extra money, it just goes towards the final payment.
Right.
It just has to dig it out.
It's a prepayment, but it goes towards the total.
Locks us in.
It's not a fee, it's a payment.
But it locks us into the price.
Right.
And then we pay upon, the balance upon delivery.
We were hoping to order at least a letter of intent or something to order just to get a line in production, a spot in production. But then along came these price increases on top of the other. So that's, that's what we're looking at, and we appreciate all the support from Fire Rescue. We understand it's one of the areas you make your largest investment in, and we thank you for, for doing that.
So you guys think you can figure out a way in this year, this...
I think we can figure it out, yeah. I'm not sure we'll do the prepay, but we would definitely like to get the contract signed, save...
Price is not gonna remain constant either. There's gonna be more price increases.
Chief, can I ask you a quick question? Could you briefly, and I know this, this is a big subject. So all of the equipment, it looks like right now that we have in the five-year, is replaced?
Uh, let's see, yes, ma'am, the...
I mean, I'm talking about the big equipment, you know?
Right, the big equipment is, that's exactly right. I'll just go, it's not that many items. The SUV replacement would be either a staff car or tow vehicle, utility vehicle. The, the two fire engines, we've already talked about. The $75,000 would be the equipment that we may or may not spend all of that on equipping the two new fire engines. There's equipment already there for those, the tanker, and then there's $8,000 for the fire rescue training center. And we have money already set aside in the CIP for the fire rescue training center. The last time I looked, we had about 600, we still have 600,000 remaining of the 750 we started with this year, and we are hoping to invest that in the Byrd building. And then, of course, the West Creek Fire Station, that's 8.2 million. And then we're looking to try to obtain a piece of property on Caldwell Road for relocation of Fire Station 2 in Crozier in, in outer years.
So my question is, replacing equipment, we're building a new station?
Yes, ma'am.
So this, some of this equipment's gonna move over to the new station. Where's the new equipment for the new station?
So the equipment, so basically the West Creek Fire Station...
I know the answer is one here.
The West Creek Fire Station, the, the actual equipment is built in with the 8.2 million, as well as another million that I've heard that may be available as well. You know, you figure a fire engine, I'm just gonna say based on these numbers, I heard it's probably a $850,000 vehicle, and we're receiving a new ambulance on Thursday morning that we paid $291 for, and that's gonna go up. So, so I, I envision that the West Creek Fire Station would be equipped with only two pieces of apparatus, a fire engine and an ambulance, and then we may, over the course of time, move some of their other equipment around that would be reserved units to, to, to that station.
Thank you very much. It's just, just wanted to be sure that that was clear, that that's what we're doing, thank you.
Thank you.
So we've got less, 6. something million for Fire Station, just to build?
So the total budget's 9.2, and then subtract, what did you say in equipment?
Say, say 800 and 300,000, so it's probably 4.2 million.
So that leaves seven? Seven?
Given what we know pricing is doing, are we sure 7 million, 7 million dollars for the multi-fire station?
No, we're gonna talk about that a little bit with some of the premium that we received.
Last year.
We did the general obligation bond, so we're gonna get there, because I think you're right.
Mr. Shark, if, you know, there are fire engines staggered throughout the 25-year CIP, and they are replacement fire engines.
Yeah, now I'm just, I'm worried about the structure itself, the brick, the bricks.
The brick and the wood.
Can we, we're gonna talk about that later. That's my... That's my concern.
That's a pretty good segue to my question, chief. And we're, we're embarking on a couple of studies this year. And I'm, I'm hopeful that those studies will inform sort of an outside perspective of what our needs are.
Absolutely.
So, so there is all, there is the potential that once we have the study next year, you could be coming with a very different picture. Or not a very, but a different picture of, well, you know, these folks think we need to invest more here.
Well, the way, the way I would answer that, Mr. Spunauer, is the study of the fire rescue master plan is a, is a concept that originated at the level of fire rescue departments so that we can be as transparent as possible and get that objective third-party opinion on how we're doing. However, those of us who are public safety officials, we know the county far better than anyone coming in from the outside. And we also, also know what's in the county already and what our daily challenges are as well as what's been approved. And so the study could possibly, and we hope, will give us some, some orders. Obviously, we make an investment in the study too.
Sure.
But we cannot miss a beat as the fire rescue department, based on the amount of growth and development that's already here and what's been approved, what we've already approved. We cannot miss a day or a beat to wait for any results of the study.
Correct. Without, I wasn't going there at all. I was actually going probably the other way. They can come back and say, you need a lot more than you actually have.
They, they might, that could be overwhelming, but you could.
It would definitely be overwhelming to our budgets. But, and then I think I'd be remiss without asking, you know, I, I know it's not, not in the CIP study, but isn't it something like when, when the, I don't know what station it's going to be, but the, the east end fire station comes, the West Creek Fire Station comes online, is the number of personnel 24?
So, so what we did is we would like to have five people on duty there, the three that ride the fire engine, two that ride the ambulance, independent staff of each vehicle. And so that would be 15. If you, if you follow the best practice that other fire departments around this file, they take the exact number of people they need and you do a 1.3 multiplier and then you get 21 people. And that 20, those 21 people would guarantee that you would have at least five on duty a day and able to account for workers' compensation annually, sickly people using their benefits of the off-duty. The other three, Mr. Spunauer, were other positions that we already had in the staffing plan for other locations across the country.
So that's, that's going to be a $2 million increase to our operating.
Salaries will be somewhere between 1.5 and $2 million a year for on-duty personnel.
How are we planning for, I'm not saying it's not needed, I'm not questioning it.
No, no, no.
How are we planning for that?
So that's part of your operating budget? And so the very little you can plan, I mean, you can plan, you know it's there. You can't, you can't really set money aside for something like recurring. So you, you better have the recurring revenue for it. One thing we are doing is looking into the SAFER grant, which would kind of ease us into it. SAFER grant is not a cure-all.
It's a help.
It's a help, yeah. It could, you know, it provides full salaries for three years.
Right, so it's always subject to change from FEMA and the way things are changing economically in our nation, I wouldn't want to say, but the last two years, the last two years, the SAFER grant has provided the cost of 100% of the salaries for up to three years.
How many?
It's, it's not, there's not, to my dollars, it's no, the number is basically the case that you make and what you need is. I know Louisa County, I believe, has received some funding from SAFER and I know Palatine has. And if you all recall, we acquired with SAFER this year a volunteer agreement in retention.
So that, that would be part of the planning, but just knowing that that's coming, you, I mean, in that year, you would be very pressed to do very low odds, you know? You wouldn't probably add any employees and any other department, you know? It, it would be a big hit, I.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, is how do we?
Yeah, it's about the number we approved this year for all departments. And we'd have to do it all for one?
Yeah, that, that's a good point.
And so, you know, our training center plays into that number too, because we feel certain that we will not get the number of pre-certified, pre-qualified personnel that will have to train those folks from the beginning to the end when you try to hire those, those numbers. We have a hiring process that opened March 1st. And as of the first of the week, we only had, I always like to see the comp half full. We have, thankfully, we have 17 applicants for positions that we have open this year. And we hope to receive 23.
How many positions are open?
Well, we're asking for five, five positions in 23. And we have, if we had the eligible candidates, we hired two today.
Good job.
Any other questions?
One other thing that I'll see and hear, and I expect that you want to get it done as soon as possible. Trip the wheel, talk around the various fire stations. Obviously, the association doesn't have all the money to do that. The association mentioned that maybe looking to the county to assist in that. And none of that shows up this year. And I think, you know, we should figure out what are those needs? What could they be so that we can put something in?
So for the benefit of everyone in the room, we have six fire rescue stations and five of the six stations are owned by the volunteer association. I can tell you that there's a high degree of willingness on part of the volunteer association to try to make improvements to these other five fire stations. And one of the five in our CIP is Company Two in Crozier that was eventually become a county fire station when it's relocated and rebuilt. And so today I had asked Executive Director of the Volunteer Association, Martin Dean, to accompany me here today because I felt certain that we might want to discuss this. So Martin, I'll turn it over to you if that's okay.
Welcome. Thanks.
I've got my slides up there. I'll take all of the slides. They're on tab two. Okay.
So we had the opportunity to take four of the five board members out to the five association end stations over the last week and kind of pointed out some of the shortcomings. They're positioned well, there's some great assets in place, but they're not quite up to the standards of the modern fire department. Many of these were built back in the 1950s and have been added on to about every 20 years. The association, while it does enjoy some good support from the community, as a 501(c)(3) now for profit, we rely on donations. We don't have the capacity to bring all those stations up to speed in a short period of time. They were built at a different time for a different purpose. That purpose has grown and evolved as the community has grown and evolved. And we're starting to feel that pain a little bit now. I can go into specifics. Basically, instead of everybody crowding into one bunk room, which COVID also taught us was a bad idea, we'd like to add individual bunk rooms for folks. It's good for mental health, it's good for sleep cycles, it's good for physical health as well. We also have some other safety issues that we'd like to have addressed. So as an association, we've started a plan to look at when our stations pretty much need to be taken out of service. One of them's pushing 70 years old. That happens to be in pretty good shape, but some of the other ones will probably go out of service sooner. They're just not worth investing your money in. So the idea of getting together and taking the tour was basically to give baseline information to everyone so that we can sit down and talk about what plans do we need to make individually and collectively to make sure we don't have gaps in service. I'm not prepared to present what that plan is today, but we have some pretty good guesses that it's a lot of money.
Mr. D, when you said we'd like that for the bunk rooms and things like that, is there a point where somebody's going to come down and say, you have to have them like this, it's not amazing to have? Or have they already done it?
You know, industry standards suggest a lot of that stuff. And FPA, which is the, the association that we subscribe to, says there are certain things that should be in place. And one of those specifically is having all of our turnout gear, which is our protective equipment, separate from the diesel exhaust. And currently, all of the volunteer stations have all of the protective equipment lined on the walls in the bays. So every time the engines start, get a burst of black smoke, all that particulate matter sits in very specific areas. And those areas are shown to be higher incidences of cancer for all firefighters. So it really is a health, health issue.
The way, way we look at it is our stations, you know, we're a combination department and that's what we desire to be in the future for those volunteers and career members. And, you know, while certainly the career members are employees of the county and you have Virginia O'Shea involved in certain situations, a career member or a volunteer doesn't need anything on a fire station that the other person doesn't also need. It's all about people as opposed to whether they be a volunteer or a career. So I think, you know, bunk rooms is the, is one of the big resounding areas of improvement as well as, as Executive Director Dean said, new fire stations are now built with, you know, a warm zone and a hot zone and a cold zone so that you can kind of keep some of those contaminants that we pick up in the field in certain areas of the fire station so you're not eating with them and sleeping with them and that type of thing. But basically, we just wonder, you know, what else is causing cancer to run so rampant in our profession? We think it's the fire scene that we bring back from the fire scenes. But also diesel fuel exhaust is a known present, very well documented. That alone is, is true.
And as well, I think too, retention of people. Whereas you're not trying to provide the wall door.
And recruitment?
And recruitment.
And.
You know, people sleeping, you know, six in a room and trying to take a shower in a three, three foot square dingy shaw. I mean, it's just about having an environment that's conducive to people wanting to be there. I agree with that, so it's a huge problem.
So, Mr. D, so are those needs effective in any of the numbers here?
No.
We have, for our information, in two battues next week, we have, we're going to be discussing a loan to the association for some modifications to one of the fire stations. So, so we'll be talking about that next week.
We got this discussion started with the Volunteer Association about a year ago, city this late. And at that time, we said the CIP assumes that the five volunteer fire stations, with the exception of Crozier, are going to be maintained and improved by the Volunteer Association. And I, I want to commend the Volunteer Association because I've, Martin is a volunteer of like five plus years, but now he's come on as Executive Director, which is a direct result of that conversation we had and willingness to try to do all we can do as an association to make those improvements as well as professional fundraising.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Yes, it's, I keep calling up people at the door. Feel free to comment, jump in, interrupt. Yeah.
Chief, thanks again for that, that update, the tour and whatnot. We need to provide safety to our public safety folks while they provide safety to us. I mean, just, we need to do that. These numbers, they need to work their way into this at some point. Now, I did hear you when you said the rolling stock response equipment is top priority for you. And, and I eyeball this, it looks like most of the rest on the top 90%, the bottom 10% of the line items seems to be the, you know, the land and the bricks and mortar and that kind of stuff. So it, it almost is prioritized that the rolling stock equipment is on top. And, and your other point, it's very valid about smoothing the replacement cycle of the rolling stock and the top priority equipment. So you can see that, you know, the tankers and the fire engines, they're all kind of smoothed out, not as lumpy as before. So that's a great way to look at it as well. You, it says replacement, replacement, replacement. The old stuff, where does that go? Does that keep it for parts, donate it to Saturday County? We've got a lot of, a lot of equipment being taken out of service here.
To this point, we've, we've had things to keep our items long after their service life. However, over the past couple, two, three years, you know, we have donated a tanker to Charles City County, two rescue trucks belonging to the association, two firefighter rehab groups around the Richmond Tri-Cities area. We're doing fire hose testing right now at Station Five for the whole department. And any fire hose that's older than 15 years, we're setting it off to the side. And so sometimes another department that has needs, they don't have that protective support, we could use some of those items. But we tend to use our items sometimes way beyond their service life.
So is there a sale proceeds to help offset the cost?
You could sell, you could sell a tanker or you could sell a fire engine. Our experience has been, at least I've controlled, the LWV vehicles that became affected by COVID was that you got little or nothing for the sale of a vehicle that was 20 years old. However.
That could change.
That market for these cars has changed. And the last one we disposed of was supplies ourselves and brought in about $7,000 for an old ambulance that we probably would have gotten on board at $2,500 for had it been a couple of years earlier.
Do we have a place to even store all of this equipment? Because this is a lot of rolling stock.
Well, you know, that's, that's a good point. You know, we did have some, some pieces of equipment that are set outside at stations because we don't have the apparatus space for. And that's why, you know, when we build a West Creek Fire Station, our standard for fire station would always have three apparatus, three drive-through apparatus spaces. Because whether you put a reserve fire engine in there or a cargo trailer that has emergency management supplies, it gets things in and out from under the weather. We're just getting ready to put a boat at the Crozier Fire Station. We'll probably put up a, a very small carport to cover one of our boats. We don't use them too often, but all our boats are in the river right now at 288. So it just depends on what you're looking at. One area that has been identified, and I know Mr. Spunauer heard this from our District Chief Boatlight, who's also an Assistant Fire Chief for Chesterfield Fire and Mass, is that we do not have enough reserve apparatus. So if we have a fire engine that goes out of service for maintenance or unexpected repair, and rarely is it just one of those, when it rings, it pours. You know, we have one or two units that we can pull from to make sure that fire station has a fire engine while that other one is in the shop. So we're hoping to be able to build a reserve fleet of a couple of fire engines that are in good condition that we can put in place if a fire engine goes for maintenance or some type of unscheduled repair. And if you have a vehicle like that, it started causing, maintenance costs, which is something to get rid of. But it would be there for a reserve fleet.
Okay. All right, again, as I look at the bottom line, six-year total here, we're, now we're up over 100,000, I guess, between the, and, you know, we gave, we were both last night at an HWA meeting and citizens, like, by assessment, went, what in the world are you guys doing with all that money? And it just seems like the needs are there. And we got to be good stewards and good shepherds.
It came up on one end and it went out on the other, right?
Yeah.
Again, thank you for that presentation. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you very much.
This, this will help keep our response times in check.
So that's something we need to watch as we get busier and the resources availability gets thinner. And you can expect to see response times creep back up. But the West Creek Fire Station going into service, we should see them come back in. And that's one of the things that you can expect to, to watch.
Procedural question for our meeting. I have questions that don't show up on this green, in the front of the five-year, but impact chief, the fire rescue for the next few, do we talk about now?
Yes, sure. Yeah, go ahead.
So putting on my District Two hat, there's an interesting, so if I look at the long-term, and of course, we don't have it up there, but you have, there's a line item for Station Two land. Okay, now with Station Two, no, I'm sorry, I may be looking at something. So we're, Station Two is Crozier. So there's a land, and then we're looking to replace Station Two in 32, 10 years from now, or 10 million. And so then, so then we have the District Two Sandy Oak land. And then looking for that in six years from now. But chief, you and I talked about.
Land this year, was it?
Land.
The land with.
The same position.
The Spunauer Foundation.
Exactly.
It's a fund.
I've been doing a lot of car washing, Don. I didn't think you really had. But we've, we've also talked about the potential, and, you know, we've, it just seems like the volume of calls right in that, we dogtown and some of the, some of the other roads there, potentially finding a interim solution of.
Yes, sir.
And hope, maybe next year that will land on the five-year, hey, maybe we could just put something there that's. maybe not optimal, but functional and get a.
So what I suggested to Mr. Alvarez, and I'm not going to call out any properties in particular, but if we were to purchase a piece of property that had existing home money, we could possibly get started with a small footprint. And keep in mind that you all know that fire stations are especially the vehicles that have all the things that we need as a fire station. But in order to get a presence in Sandy Hook with quicker response times and less distance to calls, we could possibly operate that with a repurposed ambulance from another area or engine. There might be a reserve piece of apparatus, put that there at whatever that location may be. Build some type of inexpensive climate-controlled heated garage. And firefighters could operate in the home, if there were a home on the property, to get down the road a few years to reach the FY twenty-eight for the nine million for a building. That could possibly work.
That, that would possibly, possibly, most definitely vote for that.
I'll tell you that.
Well, most definitely vote for it, citizen.
In RICO.
If there was such a place.
If there was such a place, we, we have seen in RICO County, and of course, we know about this from being in the business and the industry, but we saw in RICO County purchase a home behind Fire Station Eight at Forrest and Patterson, put up some type of metal pipe, Panzer Hut type structure for the apparatus that they now own, that they'll use again in a similar fashion that they need to. And they operated that at home while they toured out of the station, the Patterson, the government U Station. And then I think, I'm not sure what they did, I think they maybe took out the house and did it again. We could do that also. I hear a similar, there was a similar consideration in Mechanicsville, the Hannover Fire and UMS was looking at, trying to, you know, have a presence, get service started in an area that needed some additional service. So I think there are options depending on what we purchase.
Thank you for thinking out of the box with that. That's great.
A, a piece of land that kind of fits the description of you and then on the fifth or approval.
Now, what you, what you would have to not forget is that at the very minimum, we would need six firefighters to work in a day, two firefighter EMTs a day to serve the citizens based on the model we have today. And that is two people, two career members on duty, that would either take the ambulance, full fire engine, depending on what the call type was. Now, you know, we, we hope to recruit volunteers for the West Creek Fire Station, or certainly at Sandy Hook. But you can't open it with that amount. You've got to plan to cover it, career staff, and, and be thankful and hopefully get the volunteers. But I could see Sandy Hook Station being one that we would have volunteers passing through that area all the time from, from the other companies that we could stop there and get a fire engine. And that's the way we want to operate. We want to be a combination department everywhere we have a fire station.
We might have somebody looking for a third career.
I'll never go with this one. I don't want to put it on the.
Fair enough.
I recommend it.
No, no taking, okay. Anything, thank you very much. Anything else for fire rescues? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just by.
Okay, now we'll move on to facilities management. We have a couple of things that are on here on twenty-three that are, of course, on their. We've got facility grounds, maybe just kind of vehicle replacements. And then we do have the Goochon Sports Complex, which I think that's kind of a facilities management slash Parks and Rec project. That's what we have for FY twenty-three and.
Scott, you want to explain a little bit about the Goochon Sports Complex?
The FY twenty-three?
Yes.
And so we're looking at, that's upgrading the field lighting to LED lighting, Musco would match what we have at Central. Those lights are spliced underground twenty, thirty, forty times. Every year, this past season, we had three different times that we either lost a whole row of lights or individual poles, and it's a safety issue. They're playing baseball with no light at the third base line.
Are they getting sliced?
Um, they've been sliced in the past. They're spliced together now, and the water just gets into it. It's the age, I think, their original probably when the field went in, which I do not know the age of that.
We're not hitting it something.
No, no, we're not. It's underground. It's been spliced in the past. And we've spliced, we've been hit in the past and we've spliced them together. But we, right now, we have a hole out right now, and it's somewhere underground now. Every year, two to three times, we have to go out and investigate and try to find out where it's bad underground. And not, I mean, not to mention, we're upgrading to a much higher efficiency LED lighting that we can control from your phone, you can control the Wi-Fi from your home for programming. But that's with that five hundred thousand. I just had Musco out this past Friday, and I'm very hopeful. They said actually, one of the few industries, some of the prices are coming down, back down a little bit. So I'm hopeful that number will even be more favorable. Hopefully within the next week, I'll have that number and I can share it with Mr. Alvarez and Barbara.
So that's LED underground EMTs.
All new, all new wires, LED, new controls, everything, brand new poles as well, which will match, if you've seen the lights out at the Central High Complex.
And we don't, we don't see the Fairground Roads extension impacting the Goochon Sports Complex.
Not that field, not.
No, not that field, no. The lower field will be impacted.
Also on here, just to point out, in the future years, with the courthouse coming, there will have to be a relocation of the General Services Department. We, we still don't know what that's going to look like, but we have some money there to kind of figure just in case we have to buy land, obviously, in case we have to put up a building. All term, different alternatives are being considered at this point for, you know, we're even looking at maybe the fire training center, the current one, adapting that. Or there's a piece of property that we own near Central.
Robinson Road, right across from the tower, I think, we own right at three acres out there, which would be a big enough footprint, the wooded across the road on Robinson, right across from the tower site.
The, what you see for the library there is, that's just routine maintenance.
The seventy-five, yes, that's just your, your carpet replacement, your routine cyclical replacements and upgrades, HVAC equipment, those kinds of things, life cycle stuff. You're talking about in twenty-five, right, not in FY twenty-two?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
In twenty-six, what you see for the admin building is HVAC?
HVAC, mainly HVAC. We've done the chiller in this building, which was a big hit a couple of years ago. I probably remember, appreciate that. And now that's, there's a bunch of rooftop units and some other equipment, some A, A D equipment, the fire alarm panel needs replacing. So it's just cyclical, life safety and mechanical equipment is getting replaced there.
And then the admin complex renovations in twenty-seven, that was with the thought. And again, this is all kind of pre-planning and not at all sure. But that was with the thought of possibly using the new, the old Goochon Elementary School as an extension of some of our offices here. So, but again, unknowns kind of just, it's just out there for planning purposes right now.
Yes, and the courthouse complex renovation, that's kind of a placeholder with the idea that, and that might be moved back, once we build a new court, a lot of people are going to vacate their offices to go into the new courthouse complex. And that was just a placeholder to turn those areas, come up attorney, some of those areas, a usable office space for the sheriff or, you know, it was just kind of placeholder. To have some money there for that line item. And again, it might not be FY twenty-four, obviously, we don't build the courthouse sooner than that.
Yeah, the county vehicle replacement, it seems like a lot, a lot of vehicles, but that's working on just to, just like we're talking, with fire chiefs. They're doing a few every year so that we stay.
Yes, ma'am, yep. Right now, the trouble is getting vehicles, but the animal shelter, for example, they have three vehicles that have over a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. And a fully loaded animal shelter truck with all the equipment, everything they need on it runs us fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars for one by the time they get completely outfitted with everything.
I don't pay a boy three hundred and seventy thousand.
Yes.
You don't have meat dogs in the back of your.
We, yes, but the short answer is we look at a hundred and fifty thousand as a starting point of, should they be considered for replacement? If they're not giving us trouble, we have several that have two hundred thousand, we have several that have a lot more. But if they're giving us trouble, we try to cycle those out. But that's what, we have to figure it out, yes, ma'am.
And that budget pays for the replacement of everybody's vehicles except for sheriff, fire, and utilities.
Not public utilities, that is correct.
So that'd be all these vehicles, like billing.
Bill inspection.
Billing inspection, yes. Anything, yes. The departments pay for new, when they get a new employee. We pay for the replacement when they need.
Gotcha.
Mr. Fosher, what's the three hundred and fifty for Central High School in twenty-four?
That's for, we have three sections of roof out there. One of is up front with the extension offices and soil and water. That's needs replacement, it's life cycle. Over top of where the blacksmith and the old school cafeteria is, where the blacksmith field is now, that section is up for replacement. And also, there's a section in the back where Parks and Rec is finishing out, where the old shop was. The old shop is taller and it doesn't need everything around that, that back hall and everything. And we, we are chasing some leaks in all of those areas.
What, what is that for replacement?
The roof, the roof, those are, yep.
I missed that word.
That's okay, yep.
So we still have a good portion of that building that still needs to be renovated.
Yes, a very large portion.
Which, we, and we, I know from current email traffic, there's a lot of competition for space. You know, Parks and Rec is doing a great job. What's our plan to tackle that and bring that up?
I think two-fold, we're looking at, one is we have a parking issue out there, I think. Been out there when it's programming going on and now we've got it ball free. So we're looking at different options. Spoke with Mr. Alvarez, the, what we call the ban room, which is the far wing, I believe is not part of the original building, it doesn't have the historic significance. We're looking at possibly demolishing that as an option and putting park in there. Add additional parking, maybe making that all staff parking and parking for the ball fields back there. I believe the center, and Jessica can speak more to this, where the old cafeteria is, I know there was, the plans I've heard were possibly like an artisan center, maybe a community center. There's some different, different things like that is what I've heard mentioned. I haven't seen a firm detailed plan at this point on, on what's going to be done with it.
Is that money?
Is that part, you're talking about demolishing, is that part that has asbestos in it?
I have not done that study yet. I'm not sure.
There's a big part of it that has asbestos.
It could be, very well. I wouldn't be surprised at the age that it.
And that's why they've not, that's why they haven't poured down yet.
Right. Because of the cost of.
It costs more to tear it down than it did renovate the whole thing.
We're also looking at the, the front area there, maybe add some additional parking there. Where you got the loop, we've got a pretty large grass area there. We don't want to obviously make the whole front just a parking lot for the street appeal, but maybe adding some pull-in slots there just to try to increase parking where we can.
That's where I have to cut.
Yes. My guys would appreciate that very much.
But I should add, none of that is built into this, I mean.
Yes, there's no, there's no numbers.
We have not really spent any time looking strategically on what else to do with the building. We know it's big, we know it's expensive. One of our goals when we renovated the building was that it was self-sustaining.
Yep.
And we're not sure that that work will be self-sustaining.
But I think it's also worth mentioning, we bought, and I don't know where we're going with this, Mr. Fosher, but we qualified for a generator, make that a, an emergency shelter. So.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if there's any opportunities there as well, but maybe the question is, how do we, how do we get to where we want to be?
And what do we want to be?
What do we, I hear you.
Are there any grants for federal grants for.
The generator's on order, we have received a grant for that. And that, but that is mainly looking at to where the gym is, it's already been renovated. Renovating the back old boys' and girls' locker room area, shower, locker room area is part of the, upgraded to make it a true emergency shelter. The grant, yeah, wasn't appropriate, looking at any of the other existing areas. I had to look into that, yeah.
I had to look into that, say if there's not anything, if you have an emergency, you go ahead and park.
Got to park in, right.
You can go get there somehow, right?
Yeah. Thank you for the information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you all.
What's going on in it?
Judicial, judicial administration. This is our. Court building.
Where are you?
Judicial administration, this is the new court building. Twenty-five is architect, architect engineering, and then twenty-eight is for the actual building. Now that's in twenty-four. The one point five is coming from premium, or we're suggesting we take that premium of the general obligation bonds that we just built in twenty-two.
Well, all of it would, right, the twenty-eight.
The twenty-eight would, yeah.
The twenty-eight would be the next, would come or the next time, the next borrowing, the one point five is.
We do have enough money and we'll show you that later at the end to, if we want to start the design work.
How confident are we on the twenty-eight made now?
The twenty-eight is actually, Mr. Alvarez found some information that showed that that was a good price for that year when they did the estimate. So now, were we to renew the estimate?
Yeah, they had actually projected some inflation into it. So they knew we weren't going to build it at the time. But we actually have some high-level plans and so on. I, I thought since I wasn't here that you may just be taken out of the air. But it looks like there was some work done, an engineering firm was hired, and they kind of did a design of the area and the building. And they estimated that it was going to be a few years down the road, so this. Yeah, I don't know, I think they built what was going on at the top, couple percentage points, but not, not seven point nine percent.
Right, we don't have a, a recent update to that, but, but they had projected out of that.
So we say they, aren't architectural firm?
Yeah.
It was somebody that, I guess Derek hired to come in and do the estimates so that we could put together the plans for.
Can't remember the name, the firm, but yeah.
I've got the, I've got some of the drawings, Barbara has some of, some of the.
So is that, I mean, how much money have you spent for that? Is that, is that, has our firm already been procured to do the design when it comes time?
No.
No, this was just like a overview, like it gave a couple of options of like where you want to, might want to lay out.
So did they tie it into like our space study and our needs, or projected this?
It was actually done all around the same time, correct? So they did do that, they did talk to everybody and find out how large they wanted that courthouse to be. So I think we're still pretty accurate on that in terms of square footage of what we need and what offices we need and all that. Right, and so was it using that and then projecting out at the time, probably three or four years, as to what the price might be, and that's how they came up with the twenty-eight. Now, it was, we just added another million and a half to it really because we added the, the design, some of the design work that might not even cover.
Would it be worth reaching out to them, say you've done all the work?
I thought where you might be going is, is it worth our while to spend the money to have it redone now, just so we know?
Not redone, but all they have to do is update.
They're updating, right, right.
And it probably wouldn't cost that much to update.
It probably wouldn't.
They just take Marshall Swift stuff for, for it.
Uh, I could show it to Scott and maybe he can, and Tarif, that was the name of the company that did it, I think, so. If they could just give us an. And Tarif, maybe they can give us an updated judge.
We may, it's impossible.
And I can give you what it has.
I've got some software.
Mr. Chair, this, this is twenty twenty-two, and we're looking at a twenty twenty-four project, two years from now. Are we going to update the numbers every six months or are we just going to?
I think we have the highest inflation you've seen in decades. It's prudent to go sit, to say, okay, now.
Let's stop on that too. I mean, today's a Fed meeting, right? I mean, tomorrow they'll announce the first rate hike in like six years. They're on pace to do four hikes by July, which is one percent, and three by year-end, seven total hikes this year. Their goal is to slow down the runaway inflation. And there's an old saying, don't fight the Fed. Fed wants to do something, they're going to do it. And they're going to keep going until they get it done. So there's been about two or three years of compounding at ten percent, that's just not, not likely. They'll, they'll publish after tomorrow's meeting something they call the Fed dot plots. And that, each of the voters, the open lobby committee will say where they think rates should be over the next two years. And the last time they did dot plots, they said it's going from zero to two and a half percent. Last time they did that during recession. So I, I just caution against freshening up numbers two years from now when tomorrow the rates are going to start hiking with the intent to slow things down. So I, I don't want to get over our skis a little bit, that's all. And I've said my piece, I'll stop.
Yeah, I think we have time, you know, we're not going to start the project next year. We've got the fire station to kick off, so we have time. But we, my surprise was that we actually had something, that we hadn't just picked a number out of the air. We had actually done some work to get to a number. So.
Any recommendations on equity flash it short?
Trying to get free advice again.
Two months ago, you should have shorted.
As long as I've, gee, man, I'm probably going to say this all right along, but. As long as I've, gee, man, I'm probably going to say this to a later on, but, um, we've seen, I've been on the board 10 years, the numbers, the revenue numbers are up higher this year than in any of the 10 years I've been on the board, which means the sun is shining as brightly as it possibly can. And when things are bad, we prepare for the good times, and when things are good, we prepare for bad times. I don't know if this is as good as it's going to be, but it's pretty darn good. So, one of my questions would be, what are we collectively doing to prepare for the next downturn? Not that we're in it, and not that it's coming next month or next year even, but what are we doing now while the sun's trying to prepare? Are we increasing our reserves? Are we lowering the miles per vehicle on county vehicles, the sheriff vehicles, the firemen? Are we, are we doing things to kind of store away some acorns that we can live off of? Because what we need in the downturn, we need to make cuts, most of our expense is people, and we do not want to hire and fire. So, then now we're left with the other things. So, what are we doing? Are we prepaying expenses? Are we building some reserves that we can draw during the bad times? That's a big picture to throw out there, so. But I don't want to grow into 10% of your growth and then have to do something dramatic, so.
Yeah, and thank you for kind of bringing this back to mind. When we're seeing all of the projects in the round, everything's coming in so much higher. Again, we obviously don't want to do it every six months, but to have even just more visibility, is it more like 28? Is it more like 34, or is it more like 26? And I don't, I don't know how much we do for if we increase our reserve, but just kind of knowing, even finger in the wind, well, we, you know, we're a little off, or whoa, we're pretty off on this. I feel like it's a good, good thing to do.
I could, I'll tell you what I can do is I can take a look at what Mr. sent it, and I can share it back with you and tell you what assumptions are made as far as, and maybe we can start painting a picture.
Thank you for that.
What it might be.
Because like you said, you thought, you know, you didn't have the knowledge that you thought maybe some of the things were broken here, but if we can look at the assumptions that were included and then we can talk on ourselves. Are there some things that we're missing, some, some, some important assumptions that we didn't take into account? But, uh, just because this is, this is an important project and that. Yeah, I don't.
We just did a referendum, borrowed money.
Yeah.
I mean, that's how important we think it is.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, I just have a, a, you know, we saw what happened on the schools, elementary school. I guess my mindset has been, well, the same is going to happen with the courthouse, but maybe, maybe that's not the case.
Oh, no.
We don't have.
Well, because the schools also had a design, and they had an idea, or they, you know, they did similar work, so.
They got cited, cited group issues.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, they're all wrong, but I mean, it's.
Signing outside issues and.
And that 28 will be funded by a subsequent follow-on debt issuance a couple of years out. That number 28 to go with this 28, that debt issuance number is not, there's no wiggle room in that, that's been chiseled and granted.
Right.
There's no, well, let's do 30 instead of 28. So, the idea of scoping the project or living with it, you know, we can't just bump that number.
The referendum is done, it's been voted on.
Yeah, we have to know where the, where the exit is coming from if we need it. And, you know, um, it's tough to build reserves when you find out that you guys spent $400,000 or more than you thought.
Is it tough?
I just think it would be, I think it would be prudent. I think it would be prudent to keep a finger on what the big projects are called. And instead of having a surprise at the end.
Appreciate that offer, Mr. Alvarez. Anything else at court? Judicial?
Right.
Okay, Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation, only has one project in that 403. Um, that's Reynolds Recreation Complex, I believe that's renovation tennis courts, offensive field, things like that, just in here, you can talk about that one.
Yes, so the 85,000 is for the tennis courts and increasing the security of the fence around the baseball field there. The Reynolds Recreation Complex, we have an agreement with Jay Sarge that Parks and Rec will maintain the facilities. Uh, even over there in tennis courts are desperately in repair as, as the ball field.
Excuse me, could you, I'm sorry, I was looking at something, would you say that again?
The agreement between Parks and Rec and Jay Sarge and Reynolds is that we will maintain the facilities. And the tennis court is in desperate need of repair as well as the ball field.
The tennis courts facility is not the entire building?
No, we, we maintain, sorry, the agreement is that we maintain the area around the recreational amenities. So, the tennis courts and the ball field.
They allow us to use them for free, and all we have to do is maintain them.
Yes.
How many ball fields do we have there?
There's one ball field, which right now is only suitable for T-ball because of the low fencing. So, if somebody were to hit a foul ball, it's going to hit whoever is sitting there, the fence is waste time. Uh, there's also no outfield fence, there's a tree in the middle of the outfield, so it's not suitable for anyone older than T-ball. Uh, you know, so it'd be getting that field.
I mean, you're taking, right?
You don't really want to run over trees when you're trying to catch the ball. Um, but, so that would get the, the field playable for other age groups and suitable condition as well as the tennis court has cracks in it, it, it needs to be resurfaced, which is the majority of that money.
And we do, we use the tennis courts. Do we get, um, uh, do we have any revenue from that?
We have programs out there from time to time, but for the most part, it's, it's a public facility. It's the only, uh, you know, the tennis courts over at the high school can be used outside of school hours and the, their tennis clubs and teams aren't using them, but these are really the only public tennis courts in the county.
And, uh, there's no track there, is there?
Any other questions, sir? Jessica?
That project has actually been moved to transportation, so much.
Well, I don't know if Austin's up to date on it yet, but we're working on the first, um, phase of East End Trails. And I think the idea was there would be subsequent trails, uh, subsequent phases, but.
So, money when we moved out of Parks and Rec and moved into transportation?
Yes.
Is this the East End Trails that we talked about a year or two ago?
That connects, uh, 6 to, to 50. The first phase is between Hardywood and the, um, West Creek Emergency Center.
Is that, is any of that coming now?
Yes. So, we are currently, DuBarry submitted the first round of plans for our review. Uh, we're working on a paperwork shuffle to restart the VNOT funding timeline because, as you indicated, it first kind of came around a year or two ago, but we kind of, I don't, I don't really understand why things stalled the way that they did, but the funding timeline was kind of running out, so we're just doing a paperwork shuffle on that, and VNOT's fine with that. It's just going through the motions on that. And then we'll get DuBarry's plans approved, and then the first portion of the trail from that West Creek Emergency Center to Hardywood will be under construction hopefully in the next couple of years.
We don't have any signed easements yet, but there's a number of easements involved. We're trying to, in many places, use the utility easement, but we have to amend it to allow recreational use of that. In addition, there's a DUCs unlimited conservation easement over a portion of the plan, so they spent some work out way back.
We do have a consultant under contract for those easements to get those plans drawn up.
Just one other question on the Okinawa, and I know that that's, that's kind of like that boat launch area or whatever. Uh, we have all the easements there, the 30,000, I know it's a few years out, is just to.
Yeah, that was, that area is on the backside of the island, on the other side of the river, and it's basically just kind of like a cliff. So, it was about clearing that out and maybe putting a couple picnic tables and building some parking.
Outside, you can fly your.
Yeah, yeah.
Any else for Parks and Rec?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, now I have information, so, um, Randy here can speak, any questions you have. Everything he has referring, so all of them, please, if you have any specific questions.
Anything you guys want to know about?
They're not going to volunteer anything.
That's the internet work.
I mean, I, I, I did quite a couple things before my increases for this coming year. The seven, normally I serve a refresh, it was at 25,000 annually. It's increased to 70 this year because we're doing a big upgrade of our VMware environment. Quite frankly, when we, when we put our VMware in place, we spec it with two servers and expect it to be redundant so that if one went down, we could take the load of the virtual servers that were on one and bail over to the other and everything would still run. And we've grown to the point where we have about 50 virtual servers running on those two host servers. And although they're, they're, the load on each is fine, if, if we, if one ever went down, it would be too much load on the one to handle all the capacity, so we need to increase it. So, this upgrade is to buy two more host servers to spread the load out of our virtual server background so that we'll be redundant if that ever does happen, plus the licensing costs. And the other increase you see there for the Azure Cloud Server, 15,000 this coming year is for, we have our SAN devices, our storage area network devices, our NetApp devices. And we're getting to the point where we, when we originally spec them, it was about 13 terabytes. And we're not really close to that, but we're getting to the point where I'm concerned about the space of those 13 terabytes. And instead of going out and buying another upgrade to the NetApp, there's something called NetApp Cloud Tiering available that will move some of our unused space on our NetApps up to the cloud, but still be accessible through the internet. It's a lot cheaper than going and buying a whole new SAN or an upgrade SAN. Now, eventually we will have to replace our SAN, and you'll see that out, uh, the SAN storage line item out in FY '26. I'm putting in 175,000. Near end of life, we're going to support it back.
So, um, what do we write on those VMware servers?
About 50 different servers around the county. Number of things, financial Munis applications, our intergovernors is now on that, that is still allowed this May. Numerous.
But we still, no, no email is still all hosted in?
Oh, you're still hosted, correct.
Email and office, no stuff's hosted. So, what is that Azure Cloud Server at 120,000, what is that?
That's just, I've pushed that out a couple of times, we haven't used that, but that's just planning for the future in case we have to move some from on-prem to the cloud. I'm hearing rumors in my, and I haven't shared this with Park and Rec yet, so this is. I'm hearing rumors in my peer group that, that Munis is going to force customers to go to the cloud or something. Which means, you know, when we put it in, we put the system in a few years ago, we decided to go on-prem to save that money and to secure our data at the time. But at some point, if they force us to the cloud, we'll have to go to the cloud, and then we'll, we'll have to increase our storage on the cloud, our Azure Cloud, and anytime you pay for storage on Azure Cloud, it costs money.
Well, you might, because I, I just, I see where, it, it looks like, and you can, this is your area of knowledge, but it seems like you're doing both things, you're looking towards the cloud and increase capacity in the cloud, but you also 175 for the SAN. That's, I mean, it seems like we have data both places.
Right.
And 13 terabytes, we're not there yet, but you're anticipating, is that, and that SAN replacement, that's not even, that's just to replace the storage devices themselves.
They could go to the cloud, it, it could eventually go to the cloud, I haven't really thought that far ahead, but, you know, right now, it's nice to have everything on-prem in case we don't have internet access. And I've done some other things, as you guys know, in the last year to prepare us if one internet pipe, we have two internet pipes now, and if one gets cut, we have to route it through the other. So, I'm trying to get the network ready to be redundant in case a catastrophe happens, but.
And we tested it this year. It's no, it's no so.
Well, yeah, I think you want to be very reductive because, well, I guess you're saying that things went down, people would, if internet goes down, you can still, at least some people can still be able to access the on-prem things. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, it's, you know, you, you're in a dynamic field and, you know, there was a while, like, go to the cloud, and then people started saying it's too expensive, and started trying to bring things back. But that's just a lot of money, and it seems like.
Do you know what the cost is for the cloud? Any idea what the annual cost is?
I can tell you what I'm paying right now for, um, storage for our back, so this is the only thing we do right now on the Azure Cloud is backups. And we pay around 25,000 or 30,000 here. So, you multiply that by the number, if we have to push our servers to the cloud, it's going to be up around 100,000. One of the reasons why we got that number in the way I'm.
And when you say they would force us to. I know what the response really was.
Well, they won't support the application unless we move it to the cloud.
So, we would need a new application.
If we wanted to stay on-prem, we would have to change vendors.
Or, and they, they wouldn't let you do that. They have the code, so they'd say, we no longer support your local server version, we want to go, we'll be cloud.
Is that, is it just, sorry, that we're on the VM?
Is, is Munis, you're talking about Munis, is that a widely-used system?
Is that the widely-used?
So, that's a lot to ask, all the counties that are Munis to go to the cloud.
Some of them already have.
Most of them already have.
Some of, some of.
We had the option when we chose the software, oh, four, five years ago.
I think we felt, and I think I was still here, but then, you know, we felt that we wanted to keep it in-house, we wanted to protect it, not be out where somebody could, could hijack the data or anything like that. I'm not sure that it's not even better now on the cloud than it was then, but, but all the major.
It's a lot easier for the vendors to support it on, on the cloud than to have to support through different vendors, and that's what they're.
Well, that makes sense.
SAP, a lot of the big ERP systems are moving that way. Yeah, so.
But you're right, I mean, at some point, the SAN storage may go to the cloud, so it may be redundant to have those two line items. But again, I've pushed out the Azure Cloud Server line about every year, I haven't used any of them. And I just keep pushing out, but I just want to keep it in there just in case.
Is the GIS aerial imagery update, is that just something optional, when we decide it's time to do it, we just say, hey, go, go do that?
That, the state flies every four years, so that's why you see it, saw it in '22, and then you see it again in '25. So, they fly every four years, they, they take a helicopter, and they go with their little cameras and imagery, and they fly over every county in the state. And they provide you a certain level of imagery at no cost. You know, every county in the state gets a certain level, but if you want the upgraded imagery with the certain things.
Actually show the building or something.
Exactly, building footprints and, uh, higher, higher level of resolution than what they provide you, you gotta, you gotta pay extra for it, and they give you a cost schedule, and I build in a little bit of inflation cost in that as well.
So, I know we were taking a look at, I don't know where we are in the process of replacing the financial system. Is that all done, that, when we, what, what the treasury?
We still have the treasury and commissioners office, and actually Randy's involved in that project.
Yeah, I've been involved in that, we've had a lot of meetings, Pam and Jennifer, Bridgette and Yola and I. For the past year, Wanda was involved in some of them, and trying to get everything the way that Pam and Jennifer wants it, for it to go, for it to.
And we still have money left over, we haven't budgeted from the original project. I think we have about 800,000 left over from the original.
There's no CIP money in that?
So, there's no CIP money.
I think that's a critical thing we need to do.
No, I, I.
I know it's very, very hard for them to move out because it's going to mean a lot of changes to them. But it's an outdated system. Perhaps the only good thing about it is because it's outdated and not many use it, there's no. There's no hackers out there wanting to break in. But anyway, but that's kind of a-
Okay, so I thought maybe some of it would be here, but it's not. It's, that's okay, it's always me, okay. Yep.
I had a question regarding the CAD system for the sheriff, but I don't know if it'd be in the sheriff's section or if that's-
Um, we're going to do that next.
The recurring PC refreshes, is that consistent with what we've seen?
Actually, it's, I haven't spent close to $70,000 for the last four or five years. It gives it runs about around 40.
Well, no, it stays in this project, so if you have, you know.
So, so you've been spending 40 the last few years and you've been budgeting 70, there's still, there's extra?
That money's still in his CIP. So, I mean, that is something we can-
Tighten this up a little bit if you would.
You think we should open?
Tighten it up a little bit.
Oh, tighten it up.
Tighten it down a little bit. Tighten it down.
I mean, as we add more, as we add more employees, that will cost more. And it is a little more expensive than it was in the past because we've been going to more laptops once we learned that people need them to work at home, so.
Yeah, I was going to spend around 40, 50.
Have you moved, what percentage of people have you moved to laptops? And I assume they're like dockable, so people can bring them in, set them down, or they can go home or?
Oh, gosh. Off the top of my head, probably 70% of counties are based on laptops. And when the pandemic hit, we had a plan in place to get that even higher. So we're not even, unless they ask for desktop, we're given. Now, there have been some instances where people say, I don't have a laptop. I want to ask the one desktop. And they give us a neat, you know, case, a good case scenario and say, why? Oh, so that was a four-year plan, so that was two years ago we started that. So in the next two years, it should be up near about 90, 95%.
So I think that, given the historical spending, I think it's still, because, I mean, hopefully PCs are, well, they're probably going up in price on everything else.
Little.
A little bit, but not-
The price is harder to get them. If the price of them went up too much, it's just the back, you know. We're having to wait two, three, four months sometimes just to get an order of laptops.
Take it down to 60. Anything else for, for us? All right, we've been at this for about hour and a half. Let's take 15 minutes, big hand on the knife. Don't pay attention, we'll let him on here.
Well, that cocks.
Well, let me open my snacks now so I'm like. They're saying we gotta pre-open before the bikes go out. So how's the new house?
Good.
Okay. Okay.
We got a good read, we're uh, we're pushing it.
Now, when do you move in?
Our builder let us move in two months ago.
Okay. So now you're just trying to get the grass uh, grass.
Yeah.
You have dogs?
But it's bushes and horses.
Okay.
About that, she can't do this somewhere.
Right, and a German Shepherd. The Jim Stark doing it?
Yeah.
So I moved in back in the middle of horse, and had a German Shepherd. We would always take her out and decide to travel.
Christina ended up getting the complaint in the demora.
One.
I just read through them.
So I come, I see her coming out of the forest, she waves, and I go in, she had left the dog out. She must've just like let her in. And then my house was destroyed, there was red footprints everywhere. I called first, I was screaming in English and Spanish, and it was like, what are you doing? So she came back and three of us were scrubbing up pretty much.
It happened here, what's going on?
All right, thank you Austin. Mr. Sharp, we're going to Sheriff. Sheriff, okay. He's done. The last ten minutes.
We're waiting for Mr. Sharp anyway.
I got three seconds.
Oh, can I get three minutes?
Don't it's not easy to get three minutes?
He gets three seconds.
Just saying I would get a place.
I can't see without waiting for me.
Did you see Mr. Sharp in the hallway? Oh, you. Cali, Cali, Cali Day. Give him, go to his place. You have a corner, right?
And then what, will Mark announce him?
I don't know, Mr. Sharp may appoint all the options.
Pointing to the budget committee.
You're late now, Tom.
Mr. President of the committee.
We're going to put Mr. Troy into all the open positions.
Yep, all right, thank you folks, we'll go ahead and continue with the sheriff's report.
All right, the sheriff only has three things in his five-year CIP. He has a simple replacement, of course, are recurring every year, he has vehicles on the road in current. He has a $500,000 mobile command post in FY25. And replace weapons system in FY27. The mobile command post is for use for the sheriff's office and fire and rescue. If there is any kind of major incident where they need to set up a command post, the um, they would like to have one that they can actually drive, I guess, to the, to the event. And manage whatever they need to manage of that. And then the weapons, they replace their weapons every 10 years to make sure that they have um, working weapon, which is obviously important for the sheriff, and, and current, current weapons. So that's what we have for the five years CIP.
And you had asked about the CAD system, I do know there is some money set aside, and in fact, they were about to pull the trigger on that, about, oh, I didn't mean to. Terrible, this is um. Uh, but anyway, they were about to pull the trigger on that, and then um, we found out that the company that they were working with and that they want to work with had some financial troubles, and we kinda backed off on it and decided to look around some more. Um, and so, um, that was about a year ago, so I don't, I know they've been looking at different things, and they really wanna update that system, cause it's quite dated, but um, but right now, there is some money.
They did recently get another update on that company and hasn't really completed very much, so it doesn't look like that's gonna be available.
Cause I know that was their preferred company, because it's the system they have now, but at any rate, that's.
So is that in the operating budget and not here?
It's, it was budgeted previously, so it's in the CIP, we just already have the money for that, so.
I got you, good answer.
On the 23rd, they decided to be a whole replacement.
So you're kind of a what, mobile? Post?
Yeah, something they can take to an emergency. I, I, I don't know what it would be like, but I know, I know Hannover has one and it looks like a big RV, you know, it's kinda like loaded with all this stuff and gear and, and everything like that.
Currently, they have a trailer, and they have to come tow it, and it's got an antenna that rises up, and they can set up radio communications, and they can communicate, they can use, they can communicate with other localities, so that if there's a major event, uh, Herakon Command, Palatine, whomever, and they can set the right frequencies. Uh, they test, they use, test it at least once a year over here at Reynolds, and there will be people who come in on a weekend. And I think what they're, what they're looking for now is one that they can drive, they don't have to hitch it up to a, to another vehicle to take it. I believe that the first, the last one was purchased after 2001, when Homeland Security provided a lot of vehicles, so it's at least 20 years old.
I think the only comment I would make on this is based on what we heard from, from Chief Ferguson. I wonder if the ordering of these vehicles and timeframe, if we want to shift maybe a couple of, so that we're getting the orders in so that we have the stock, but.
Yeah, and I know they've gotten different notices about when they have to order and.
It's very specific now, they have like a week's timeframe where they can make their order, and they have to have their order ready, and they have to submit it during that week, and it's like everything else, unfortunately, things are backed up 12, 18 months, so you're ordering these vehicles now, you hope to get them in a year. It's, it's changed quite a bit from the way it used to be.
Have you ever used the one we have?
What's that?
Have you ever had to use the one we have?
Um, probably we've ever had to use it, we've used it for practice. We have had luckily, we haven't had a major event where we needed to bring in all the localities.
Yeah, I mean, I try to envision when you might use it, I mean, there was, a few years back, you might remember, CSS tracks, uh, something duck oil, spill oil. That's been on-site emergency management, where you need a permanent presence there for some extended period of time. That's, you hope that never happens, but you know, chlorine tanker or something, you know.
We might have actually used it then, I think we drove it to the scene.
But that would be fire and rescue.
Fire and rescue would use this as well, it would be.
So would both use it?
Yeah, we've been talking, they've been talking about joining forces sometimes, so.
911 Center, we built for a command center, but that makes more sense if it rains everybody.
Well, it's right, and if it's a serious, and it probably does involve both of them, I mean honestly, that's probably what would really happen.
All right, anything else?
I'm gonna move on to utilities. All utility projects are funded by connection fees. Here are the, uh, here's the utility CIP, there are two projects in FY23, you've been on Hills Sewer, and you've been on Hills Quarter, and that is here, and you can discuss that.
All right, so.
Good to see you.
So you guys have your questions?
So as Mary Ann mentioned, uh, the only project we have on our CIP for next year is you've got a Hills Sewer Water Service Project, that project's already in design. We anticipate having designer at the, that project by the end of this year, so. The total cost for both the water and the sewer project uh, is just over 2.5 million dollars. Where that number comes from is our preliminary engineering report that we've already completed for the project. In years past, that number was much higher, uh, with, with the high level numbers that we had out of the master plan. As we've done more engineering, as we saw more of the unknowns uh, in the project, that number's come down, which is what typically happens with, with these type of projects, so. Other than that, not much has changed from years past, the projects have slid back a year or two. Uh, we evaluate projects on a yearly basis, one, uh, for our capacity, uh, as far as financially, can we do it? Do we have the connection fees uh, in the bank, do we have the cash to do it? Uh, these projects are slated as cash flow projects, so we make sure we have funds uh, to do the projects first. Uh, the second is time capacity, as far as uh, within our department, do we have staff that can actually get these jobs? So, we evaluate them on a yearly basis. It's worked out well in years past, we've been able to complete a lot of projects, but if you see a couple shifts here or there, that's one. Other than that, any other questions?
The force main, that's in the 22, right?
The force main, uh, that's a great question, is not considered a capital improvement project, that is a rehab replacement project, correct.
Or not.
A rest of realization project, that's all I've gotten from that project, so. Uh, unfortunately, no, but that is not in the capital improvement plan, it doesn't fall under that category of utility capital improvements.
It's not any capacity, it's not.
Right, now at some point, we may, way down the road, we may actually plan out R and R projects, and which time we could bring that forward, but that's, this wasn't planned, and, and we're hoping not to have any others for quite some time.
That, that's right, actually in our utility master plan, that's a brand-new section we added in the 2020 update, uh, was a rehab replacement section, and it has uh, a fairly rough schedule of R and R projects that are, because those projects are planned out beyond the time period of the master plan, a lot of them have made it on there yet, but we, as Barbara said, we are in processes, are gonna develop some of those schedules for R and R projects similar to the capital plan.
Good, uh, that, in that master plan, help me if I, uh, there's maps, and plots of, you know, this five-year window, we're gonna cover these hash marks, or, you know, in these five years. How does this dovetail with that, is that, does this bring forward or present the ones that were in that next five-year window? Or are there, is there a real one, a question, or?
That's a good question, I actually got it right here, so I can see what Mr. Peter said it's talking about. We have, so this is an example right here, in our master plan, we have uh, all the plans approved over the, the period of, that covers the master plan, so, uh, it's 20 years here, all of our planned approvals for 20 years. What we do, some of these improvements that make it on this map are geared towards the development community. Basically, if you wanna develop this area of land, you're gonna have to extend water service or sewer service to your property, and this is how it needs to be laid out. So it, it gives developers guidance of how the extensions need to be put in. So some of these projects are development-driven projects. Uh, the other projects are county projects, and those are the ones that make it on this list. So, this list is based off of the master plan, uh, but just cause it's in the master plan doesn't mean it makes it on this list.
Because it could be developer-driven as opposed to county-driven.
That's right, that's right, the, the master plan doesn't really make a distinction between the two. It's just, these are projects that need to be completed to achieve the goals, whether a developer does it or whether the county does it.
Okay, okay, cause I know that master plan, uh, as the trunk lines get extended, eventually you start passing plan developments that were built 50 or 60 years ago, either with, you know, failing septic, or water, well water that's, you know, questionable, whatever, company like a fire station, but anyway, you know, um, and then as you pass those, you've got a captive, you know, audience of 100, 200 homes, whatever, it just hooks up right away, so it's not like you have to wait for development to occur, it's like you pass it, and bang, you got a whole development already built out, they can, you know, hook up. And so I know some of that was along River, along Patterson, along some of the older developments, along those areas, that you could just hook up, you know, entire developments, you know, and you know. And I don't know what kind of project, I mean, some of those were targeted, and they're on the maps, and they're hash marked, people go in there and look and go, okay, my septic's about to fail, oh, it's coming next year, or five years, you know, if it's not coming for 20 years, we probably should just update those things and let people know, it's not, it's fresh current information, that's all. So, just a word, maybe freshen those up, and if they get going forward, so may, if they don't, uh, we just need to at least update the, if we pass by the passing by, then we.
That's right, and, and that will happen.
Nevermind, it's the points there.
We've identified the major neighborhoods that fall in that category in our currently undergoing projects. Uh, Hickory Damon, which is currently in construction, pipes are going into ground as we speak.
Good example.
And then you've got Hills, which is in planning, um, and it's slated for FY23, so that's what it took me.
One good example, the long river, there's a couple of older ones that, you know, have been developed, you know, like Lower Tocco, I think we went back there, Loop Dan, the ones that were not Loop Dan, but anyway.
That's right.
So there's some older developments that when you pass by them, they'll be captive, captive owners to them.
All right.
Okay?
So, uh, just, there are a couple that show improvements, and I'm su, I'm assuming if they don't say improvements, and there's three, I can't find them, two and three, yeah, three, uh, all the rest are new, is that correct?
If they don't show improvements, they're new, uh, generally, that, that's how the process works out.
Okay, just wanna be sure I was following you. And this West Creek, uh, little of the control valve, seems like I've heard something about that, can you tell me?
The project's currently in design, uh, right now, what that project does is it will, uh, when construction's complete, provide redundancy to our super-rain blow pressure zone.
Pressure, okay.
And you approved the, the design of it so far?
Correct, correct, and then we have our construction, uh, currently slated for FY24.
And this Sergeant Reynolds, um, water main improvements, that's getting water to them?
That's not, that's, uh, I believe the route is Dixon Road, uh, that Sergeant Reynolds is currently on. There is a water line that goes all the way down Dixon Road, ties back into Fairground Road. Uh, right past J Sergeant Reynolds, that water line decreases to four inch. So, this project will take the four-inch line and bump it up to the 10-inch line, that's currently in Dixon Road, that would create uh, a lot more airflow and better redundancy in the system, so.
So that, that's at Dixon and uh.
Dixon and Fairground, I got it, so, it would, it would be abandoning the four, the undersized four-inch pipe that's in the ground, uh, and upsizing that pipe to provide more capacity in the water system.
Sandy Hook Water Main Loop?
Sandy Hook Water Main Loop, uh, we are planning to be a veteran, uh, to kind of piggyback, what's called a D dot veteran, to piggyback, piggyback on the Fairground Road extension project. What that will do is cause, or create a, an internal loop in the system, and again, uh, provide better airflow and redundancy in the system. You're not bringing water sewer out to Sandy Hook?
My household.
Yes, building septic?
Septic.
That's right, Sandy Hook Road. Not the roundabout, that's, uh, the Fairground Road Extension Project, so it should be coming after the roundabout.
Oh, so that's.
So it's south.
You're talking about 344, like 344?
Yeah. Correct. So that'll take you to the road? Correct.
So that's the Fairground Road Extension?
Back to the Park at Saddle Creek, uh, they're, they're on public water now?
They're on public water.
So this loop is just to connect that end, or?
That loop is in our master plan to connect the Park at Saddle Creek Internal Community Water System to the Park at Centerville.
That's just kinda the loop, right?
Correct.
Kinda the loop between the two, generate a loop there and stuff that ends?
That's exactly right, yeah, to, to help water flow, uh, everybody do redundancy, redundancy and improve airflow and everything.
Okay, 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 that makes sense, yeah, if they're on public water, maybe you saw, you know, putting water loop through there, like, okay, that makes sense, that makes sense, but thank you. Matt, will they, uh, the last couple of years, there's been a lot of conversation about work going on with the prison, and upgrading our systems and stuff like that, is that, all that work completed, or has that been a number?
It's not completed, uh, to date, so, we have funded the projects, I checked in with their project manager actually last week, didn't get any updates, the plans have just been approved internally by the state, so, even though the Department of Corrections is a part of the state, they have to get other departments within the state government to approve the plans. Those were just approved, the project manager, uh, let me know that she's working on wrapping up another project, so she gets that done, she will put our project out.
So we have, you know, two new neighborhoods coming online, is that project, let's say, that project's delayed, does that impact any of these projects?
It should, it should not impact Reed Marsh, uh, Reed Marsh was factored into our current capacity, as, as Homes in Rural Hill, this is our whole lot, and we keep the preliminary plans, we'll keep track of our current capacity and how that's gonna affect it. We should have enough current capacity, but that, it could push the boundary of the, the 80% average use capacity. So, we have a certain number of capacity, the average use, once it bumps up against that 80% mark, is typically in our industry when we start planning to approve it, so.
The rural retreat, it was only the lower houses.
Correct.
That were gonna have public sewer.
Correct.
Everything else is, is uh.
And water too, right?
Everybody's in war, everybody in war, but the sewer was only the, the smaller lots down closer to River Road.
Right.
And everything up in the back, which is, or down by the river, that way was the sewer. Yeah, this is the DSC that we're talking about, that's the sewerage expansion?
Correct.
Cause I know there's, for the extra water too, that we're gonna get additional capacity on that, but, so, for both of those projects, are those dollars R and R, and they're not in here?
No, they're not in there because they've already been funded in previous years.
In previous years, that money's already been funded.
Correct.
Okay, okay. So after this expansion, the work that's done out here, rural could not extend sewer to whole development?
The issue of Rural Hill extending sewer to the entire development has nothing to do with our capacity. Once the work's done out there, we're gonna have plenty of capacity, their issue is that it's a raid.
Okay, so. It's a matter of moving it from one place to another.
That's right, it's just not feasible, the, the lot's closer to the river.
Don't roll uphill. Yeah. But we feel like even if it's delayed, we'll still be okay, because we need to do the, not that we have any, it's the state, but.
Matt, if we go back to J Sergeant Reynolds, uh, the main improvements, there's a development being proposed for Fairgrounds Road, would this help that, or would we be able to leverage our project to pay for some of this?
Uh, this will help that project.
But we can't leverage.
For our fire flow, available fire flow system.
Can we leverage that project to finish some of this?
Would this be required, upgraded to improve that project, or would it not be required?
It's potentially, you know, potentially, that, that's been bounced around with the developer and the engineer. However, and, and I'll have to verify once the final calculations come in, they claim, I guess we're kinda getting off the topic, but, they claim they can meet minimal fire flow requirements even without this, and if that's possible, then that's the standard they're held to. So it's not that we couldn't potentially get them to do this, using, you know, connection credits or something, what can happen.
So with, um, I know some of the work that the ED team is doing to figure out site readiness, and my understanding is they're looking at the different tiers, what does it take to get a site from a tier two, which nobody's gonna come and get into, to a tier five, which is almost open and ready? Once that's done, I think we're gonna have discussions in the board to figure out, how do we, is there an appetite to, to try to get some of these areas more attractive to develop, to commercial development? So I'd be interested to see when that report comes out, how we can press that, working on this board.
When do we expect that?
I, I, there, I don't know, I, I don't wanna guess for that. I, I, I don't know, I don't want to guess for that.
Fair answer.
All right, but it's exciting. Anything else for utilities?
Thanks, Matt.
Now the exciting part. How are we going to pay for all this?
Yeah, that was exciting. Matt's right here.
They've spent all this money. Oh, yeah.
He takes his get.
No, Matt, Matt can pay, Matt, Matt's got money. He's got sources. We, I was thinking that when I was doing it, he's got those connection fees, we need a source like that. A move-in fee, you know?
Thanks, Matt.
All right, thank you all.
All right, that was good one.
So here we are, we've covered everything that we want to spend, now how are we going to pay for it? So every year we use a million dollars of operating funds for recurring CIP items, this is Mr. Peterson's thing, he likes. We also have proppers in there, the seven hundred and five thousand are for schools. Six hundred of that was the Goochlin Elementary that we talked about earlier, and a hundred and five is for a bus. The debt is for the eight point two and one point five for projects that we've already borrowed. Now, the next one's a little questionable, there was something in the governor's budget for roughly around six hundred thousand dollars a year for the schools that you could use to fund capital projects. It's in the House version, but not the Senate version, well, the Senate version, but not in the House version, I'm not sure which one right now. It's one of the others, so, okay, so now it's, we're not sure.
Right, so they were going, the state was going to give one point, it was in Northam's original budget, one point two for five altogether, and they were going to use that for all those HVAC projects that they talked about, but, that is, it's not a guarantee, right now we go ahead and plug it in at six forty-five. You know, whenever the General Assembly passes a budget, we'll know whether that is in or not. If it's not in, we will either have to think of a, a way to pay for it, or we will have to cut their budget six hundred and forty thousand, so.
But they can.
They have for that, project one, two, nine, three, nine oh six in twenty-three, so this only covers about half of it.
It's the no renovations stuff?
Yes, yes, yes.
So. Right, and that was.
And then we have money in reserve that we plan every year for the CIP, so that takes care of twenty-three. If you look out twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, contingent on previous year savings, we're very optimistic, and twenty-five and twenty-six is that number. You know, we, we don't know where we're going to be in twenty-five and twenty-six, as we've all said numerous times in this meeting, but those are pretty good size numbers that we are hoping to have previous year savings to balance the out for CIP.
Yeah, and those are actually, we had to do a lot of cutting to get to that point. Again, is that realistic at this point, we don't know. The, the four point four for twenty-three is about what it was this year, so I'm pretty comfortable with that. But then, once you start getting into the larger numbers, it starts getting a little.
Well, just so before you, to get a little deeper, help, help those of us that are still trying to figure it out. Yeah, words. Contingent on previous year savings, is that number what you plan to put into the CIP from operating?
Correct, correct, so instead, it's, it's not elevated to the level of reserves, because we don't know if we'll have those reserves.
So that's in addition to the one million that we're?
Right, so the one million is, is like?
So what have we done in the past with that line?
With the one million?
No, the, the contingent on previous year savings, is this a new thing that we're going to try starting to talk about?
No, this is, this is pretty much the way we've done it in the past, is that if.
So it's just cash funding things, is that the idea?
Yeah, I mean, we've been cash funding it to the tune of four, five, six million dollars a year. Can we continue to do that?
That's, that, thank you, and that was more impressive than you expected from that thing. It was very impressive, but. Is he gazette it? I don't know, let him draw them out.
Get the gazette in here and cover this.
Good job, that's a good job. Oh, you have to, okay, you did a good job, man. Let me extend that for you, and just, you know. Couple things, first I'll start with the ending, you asked, have you done it before and can we do it in the future? When Barbara and I met with the rating agencies, we showed them our budget, balanced budgets surplus for the last five, six, seven years with the idea that we eat budget conservatively, and we're consistent in our conservative budgeting, that it's not just a one and done. And they looked at the budget actuals over the last period of years and said, you are consistently budgeting conservatively because there's something left over. We've been using that something left over to cash fund CIP, because the alternatives are raise taxes, draw in your reserves, or issue debt. And if you've got an operating surplus that covers your annual recurring, non-recurring capital spending, then you don't have to go into debt or draw down your reserves or dig yourself in a financial hole. You're structurally balanced on the operating side, but I'll, I'll suggest that part of that CIP isn't operating, because it comes every year. Let me put some numbers to that. Twenty twenty-two, debt funding forty million, total need forty-six, delta is six. When an operating surplus of six you cover to CIP, that's cash funded, pay as you go. That's what we've been doing for the last several years. Going forward, let's look at the numbers again, debt sixty, total need ninety-seven, that's thirty-seven. Thirty-five divided by five is seven per year, so you're talking about sixty this year and seven per year going forward on average for the excess non-debt funded need. So if we generate sixty-seven million a year of annual surplus through conservative budgeting, we can cover the non-debt portion of this capital spending without adding towards the debt or drawing down our reserves or digging ourselves in a hole. So that's what we've been doing, we've worked out the limits, we haven't drawn ourselves in a hole, we haven't drawn down reserves, and what would be required going forward is to have that same level of conservative budget. Now, one of the problems I have with this is during the go-go years of twenty-two and twenty-three, we're drawing down our reserves, and then the next downturn, we're not, not using any reserves at all. Well, it seems to be, it should be that a way, it should be adding your reserves during the go-go years and drawing down the reserves.
Well, that's the money that could become reserves if we actually have those saved, so it's, it's just, it's just in a different line to indicate that we're not, we're not planning on it yet.
And let me try and, you said something that caught my ear when you were presenting this, you said we had to, you were kind of being cautious and circumspect about meeting those numbers, and then you said we had to cut things to get that to work.
Yeah, well, the schools was the biggest one.
That's what I was going to ask, what are you cutting, because if you are, you're budgeting conservatively, you're projecting conservatively, and then you say you're cutting to get there, then that kind of, it's cutting that's working against.
So for example, the year that they wanted almost four million dollars for their high school program, and we only gave them a million, we would have been at seven, eight, nine, ten point five previous year savings, had we not reduced them from almost four million to one million. Their ask.
It was mostly the schools, anything else we couldn't, we just kind of push out to the past. Now, are we just basically pushing it out with the schools?
You're talking about pushing it out past the five years?
Right, are we just basically, we probably are, you know, but they wanted eleven million dollars over five years to do HVAC maintenance. Eleven million dollars was, is a really big number to try to get in in those.
For technical training for air conditioning.
Yeah, I think we're in the wrong business.
In those five years, so we, you know, that's not to say that they won't have to do it, you know, after those five years or even before, I don't know that, but, but being realistic, we didn't feel we could up the amount of cash being put in. Maybe next year we'll find out we're in a better situation than we can, you know. We, we adopt the first year, twenty-three, so the last four years is just a plan, but, but like, you know, you talked about earlier with the firefighters, we try to look ahead and see what, what we can afford. We don't want to start a project and not be able to finish it or whatever.
This, this is kind of the answer to what you were saying earlier, and I'm hearing about, you know, folks are saying, hey, look at the increase on data, what are you guys doing with all money? This is the long answer.
It is, if, you want to go to the next, and we'll talk a little bit more, I mean, we can go back to that, but I just, I do want to get this out on the table, because this is something we have not discussed. So, we, we just issued fifty million dollars in debt. We, and then we also, we knew that, you know, these projects were starting to overrun, run over and all this other stuff, so, without getting into bond details too much, we also got another pot of cash, so to speak, which is called premium. So, the buyers paid a premium for the bonds, it's, it's, you're still paying it back, but, but it's not allocated to those projects. So, we got the original fifty million, again, knowing that projects were running over. Forty-one point eight of it was to, went to the new GES and eight point two to the twenty-two. Now, actually, the new GES, only forty point eight has been budgeted so far, but that adds up to the fifty million. But we also got, have nine point six million in premium available for allocation. We, in this plan, used one and a half million of it for the courthouse design, you saw that already. But, so if you take that from the nine point six, we still have eight point one, eight million dollars that, again, you were asking about cost overruns, we've got that cushion right now, we've got eight million dollar cushion, so to speak. It hasn't been allocated, it's part of the debt issuance, we have to pay it back, but it's, it's beyond the par, so it doesn't count towards the referendum amount.
But does it have, it has to go towards those projects? We can't take it and say, okay, we want to, we want to put that towards our, our monitor?
There's, no, there's, yeah, I mean, there's, we can bend it though in terms of how much we give to what. It's not as, as strict, as long as it's referendum projects, so.
Referendum, they have to be referendum, right?
Right.
Which means it has to be fire station, courthouse, schools.
Correct.
Makes it good, right?
So.
There's two referendums, not one.
Right.
Right, right, schools.
One public safety, one's one public safety, and one's schools.
And the money raised, the power amount that we issued on each of those, needs to go for those purposes. And schools needs to go to schools, and public safety needs to go to public safety. Doesn't necessarily need to go to the GES versus high school, but the schools needs to go to schools, and public safety needs to go to public safety. In addition to the power amount that we've created with those two buckets, that's dedicated monies. The premium is more, as I understand it, can float between the two types of projects. But was passed on the same referendum issued by the same bonds, and needs to be used for the, one of those two buckets. So even if the school referendum brought in more premium, you could allocate that because?
Correct.
They get their par, public safety gets their par value, and then the premium is available for allocation, but it needs to be, it was passed by the referendum issued to those bonds, it needs to go to those, those two buckets, one of the other. They can't go to a third bucket. And it doesn't need to follow a percentage, doesn't need to?
No, I don't think so.
That was one of my questions, so it's not pro-rata, like?
Correct.
You know, forty percent, you know, eighty percent, maybe twenty or whatever.
Correct. So.
But that also could go for, just example, the Sandy Hook section, right?
It could go for a public safety project.
I'm not saying we're doing that, but I'm trying to get a sense of what this is.
Yes, yes, because even those specific projects that were listed in the referendum.
They were giving examples.
Where they were given as examples, exactly, that what's important is the sixty for a school project and the thirty-six for county projects, county project, public safety project.
And so when you talk about building that firehouse and the equipment going in it, and is it going to be cost overruns as a ten million, I think it turned to eleven? There is some potential, and on the school construction, where there's a gap, they can re-stoke for a bit of it, they can draw ahead from future school projects for a bit of it, and there may be some premium available for a bit of it, but not all of it, obviously, it's just not a money will run, so there's, those are ways to address the shortfalls in a way that seems to make, you know, financial sense and doesn't.
So do we make the decision on where that premium available goes?
You will, and then you will have to appropriate it, yes, and then we'll, we will say to you, I mean, you don't have to decide today, and it's not a ready meeting, but, but I wanted to get that numbers out there so that you understand, like, if we approve this CIP, you will have appropriated one and a half, one point five million of it for the courthouse design, which again will leave about eight, if you want to say we'll need maybe another two or three for West Creek, and that's just, you know, those are just maybes, we can, you know, put, we don't, we can appropriate it, or we can put it in our mind, and, you know, aside in our mind, and still leave, um, a map of eight, five or six million that we could think about for schools. We haven't gotten a final number from their redesign, they, we talked to them the other day, yesterday.
And we can talk about this too later?
The end of, the end of the month, I think they're supposed to get the final redesign number from, from the architects.
The twenty-ninth, this is your meeting with Eric, I think.
Um, so, just, just putting this out there now so we can start having discussions about it, and so we can start, you know, thinking that that is an option, and then the new circuit court building and the GES renovations additions would, would use up the rest of the forty-six, and even the current budgets for those would have to be adjusted, because there isn't, if you look at the forty-six, there's, what's remaining is eighteen point two in schools and twenty-seven point eight for the county, and there, you, if you look at their budgets, there's more than that, so, so we would either need five million in the premium then, or you could use five million and, or you cut those budgets, you know, or you come up with a different way to, to get that back.
But there's not something we need to decide today?
No, no, I just wanted to, um, put that out there so that, you know, we can start thinking about it, there are, there is, not to reassure ourselves too much, because, you know, obviously we don't like all this price increase and everything, but there are ways, we're not stuck yet, you know, we're not in a, in a real big corner yet with that premium available, so, you know, so you'll hear us talk about this more as we know more about the projects and, and what we can do to, I don't know, I think, you know, for the first year, we're in good shape, it, it's also letting you know that, that there's a lot of infrastructure needs out there and limited number of ways to pay for them.
So probably in twenty-two and twenty-three, we're taking almost nine million out of the reserves?
We're not taking, we're not lowering the reserves, because again, we had surplus, so it's staying the same, so.
Because the budget's growing, so I don't want our reserves to shrink as a percentage of budget, so we'll need to grow the reserves along with the budget, budget's grown fairly dramatically.
We'll need to grow the unassigned, but this is out of the sign, so.
Assigned and unassigned combined is available, available reserves are what they look at, because assigned's going to be reassigned if there's a problem or need. So it doesn't matter which of those buckets it comes out of, our total reserves in the percentage of our credit, our available reserves is percentage of credit. It needs to at least in concert over time of that shrink, because the budget's growing and we're not growing along with it. And the RSF, the RSF, I mean, stabilization fund, you know, needs to grow to stay three percent. And then the other side, the assigned combined, would need to continue to grow at the same rate that our overall budget, in order just to preserve that cushion of the same magnitude, so to protect our credit rating. So, does this, does this budget do that, does this grow the reserves at the same rate as the overall budget?
Not the CIP specifically, no, I mean, that would be from our operating surplus, yeah.
So does that, does our assigned and unassigned combined as a percentage of budget, does that grow along with the budget? does that grow along with the budget? Budget's growing at what, ten, thirteen percent, I think it's.
Twelve percent this year.
About twelve percent, and our reserves growing at twelve percent because that's, we have, um.
Our general fund budget grew twelve percent.
And we have.
The overall budget was down.
The reserves. So we have thirty million in reserves, so we did the four. You see, we're working the same percentage, uh, whereas our reserves shrinking.
And I, I understand your point, but I guess my, my thinking is if we assign, if we assign money for a fire station over the years and we build a fire station, we use that assigned money to build a fire station. And you're saying that we need to replace it, so we need to assign it, assign it to something else?
I'm saying that if you assign money, it's available for reassignment. If you spend that money, it's no longer available for reassignment. So it weakens your financial position. That's not, you can't do it or shouldn't do it, I'm just saying it weakens your financial position to do that. Why don't you drain your reserves even if they're assigned? It doesn't matter if they're assigned or unassigned, you're depending upon.
Right, I mean, the unassigned for our policy, we'll, we'll always, you know, keep within policy and we'll have to increase it to stay within those percentages. The assigned, the rating agencies and everybody expects that to vary a little bit. They don't expect that to stay totally stable because they, as you said, expect you use it when, in times you, you know, that aren't as good and, and build it up in the other times, so, um.
And maybe, you know, the other thing is when you assign, you actually appropriate it, it becomes part of your budget. So you, if you maintain your reserves as a percentage of your budget, you actually then increase your reserves because that's something you budgeted. So.
Yeah, maybe, said, said another way, half of our reserves are assigned right now. If we went ahead and followed through and spent all that money and cut our reserves in half, that triple A is gone, we have to, I can't even chase it.
Well, I don't, I think if we cut it in half, but I don't think anything that we're going to do is going to cut it in half.
But half of our, half our reserves are assigned, right?
But most of them are assigned.
But assigned is expected to be used.
It also, over time, right? Over time, not this year.
Over time, not, not in one year, but over time.
We can't, we couldn't spend it all at one time just to fill out the, or we'd all have to do all those projects either, so. I, I get the logic, you assign a project, project comes up, you spend it. We've got half our reserves are assigned right now. If we went ahead and did those projects and spent that, cut our reserves in half, that triple A is gone. Now, you can say, well, the whole purpose of the signing is to pay for a project. But while it's assigned and not spent, it's available for reassignment in case a hurricane blows a roof off the high school. If you spend it, it's no longer available, you're weakening your position. So, yes, it's supposed to be assigned, yes, it's supposed to be spent eventually, but as long as you're replacing whatever goes out and you're maintaining your, your total available reserves, then you have to weaken your position. So that's where I'm getting at, is our combined reserves growing with our budget or not. If, if we got twenty million assigned and we spent ten of those projects and then assigned ten more and we've kept our position, or we've done those projects, I mean, that's, we're supposed to do those projects, but you're not supposed to drain your reserves. And that's what we need to, that's really just my question is, you know, does the operating budget going forward into twenty-three preserve our available reserves as a percentage of the twelve percent increased budget? Or does it, you know, level fund or flat fund the dollars and allow the percentages to start to decrease? That's all. So, you see where I'm going with all this? Am I making myself clear?
Our goal is to meet our policy.
You are, but, but that, you mean our policy? Because you said our policy is unassigned.
Is only unassigned.
Unassigned will always stay, so I'm, I'm hearing competing things about what the actual policy is.
So the only policy we have, the written, only written policy refers to our unassigned. And I would say that money is what is for the hurricane, not the assigned. The hurricane or the earthquake is the unassigned, but that is the money that.
Ken is saying the rating agencies are looking at our entire bucket, assigned and unassigned, and they, they, they see that as essential. Apart from our policy being, uh, unassigned being a percentage.
It's a part of it, I mean, they add the, the assigned and unassigned and they say that's all available. Um, and they also say you have way more than anybody else has, you know? So.
You're the only cap in the country to do it.
Um, you know, I would, and Mr. Peterson and I have had this conversation before.
Conversations of.
So, um, I would, um, I would agree on the unassigned. I would never want that to go down unless it was a pure emergency and we had an earthquake and, you know, we had to rebuild a school or whatever. Um, I would want that percentage to stay per the policy, so it will have to increase just to stay as a percentage of the budget. Um, I would, I would argue that we can use some of the assigned, you know, and it, it'll be more of a, look more like a zigzag line. We could, you know, use a couple million for a project, may, may build it up the next year when we have surplus, you know, that kind of thing. It can be assigned to.
It's a way for a good way to double that.
But, but you're, you're describing a tight CIP budget with kind of nail biting, sounds like contingent on previous year savings numbers. So how do you build the total reserve bucket in that environment?
If there's a budget.
Um.
We just have to adjust what we're asked.
You assume that you're going to have, um, even, still have a conservative budget and then you'll have surpluses. Will you always have surpluses of six or seven million? No, not necessarily. So when you're surp- we better end our, our operating budget with a surplus because if we don't, then we've done a really bad job. So we'll always end up with some.
Always end with a simple, but the question is, this size of it, because we've historically been relying on it
Right.
to cash fund needed projects, right, and, and other things.
Right.
It, it seems to me.
So we just have to adjust the CIP, right?
Mm-hmm.
And let's just say we don't have the five million, the sixty million.
Right, and, and Ms. Soskow is absolutely right. We just have to, we can't do that project.
What's we're going to spend?
So go back to Ken's question, does your budget hold the assigned and unassigned combined reserves steady and climbing consistent with our projected revenues?
So you, you don't really budget.
projected, projected expense.
To a balance sheet item, so to speak, you know? I mean, so in that respect, we don't, we don't have something in operating, in our operating budget that matches operating revenues that says, we're going to set this much aside and, and fund balance. We're not at that point yet. Some, some small counties that don't have, um, large fund balance have to say, oh, well, of all this we're going to bring in, we're going to actually not spend it all on salaries and things, but we're going to actually set some of it aside in order to build up our fund balance. We are not at that point. So is it in the budget to do it? No, it's more of an exercise at the end of the year to say, can we assign, you know, we have a lot of assignments right now that we can probably reassign to something else, you know? Um, we have money for future road projects. We have money for, if it got to that point where we had to say, we don't really have enough in here, we could reassign it to the CIP and choose our priorities that way.
Can you, in his question, let's just take the RSF, the stabilization fund. During the good years like this, budget grows twelve percent. Have we budgeted an increase in the RSF by twelve percent? Because that's a rainy day fund and it's not raining. And if we don't add to it in the same proportion as the budget grows, we're actually effectively draining our rainy day fund during, while the sun's shining. And that's the question is, so the assumption of five percent a year growth and the revenue has ever been in the five, in five years, five percent a year, do we have those reserves, required reserves, keeping pace and adding five percent to those each year?
Not in the budget.
Not, isn't, not, we don't budget to it. We don't budget to it. That's an exercise that you do at the end of the year when you assign the money. And if you say, we don't have enough in our revenue stabilization, then it can't be assigned to something else, it has to go in there.
That's my point, the bottom line contingent to five million, six million, seven million. At the end of the year, we're going to have, you know, five or six million, maybe, hopefully, whatever. And then we're going to say, yeah, but we need, you know, one or two that to, to keep our, our reserves to keep pace. And this doesn't work. If you, if you.
That's why we have to adjust it.
If you take that into account, this doesn't work. And let's circle back to just a second, unassigned versus unassigned. Just to put some numbers to it.
Can I make a minute, can I make an analogy just to, because I have to bring it down to stuff I'm used to. So, I think it's a good practice, keep three months or six months' worth of bills in my savings wherever I'm at, right? So my unassigned would be my three months of bills, whatever goes higher, I've, I've got that in the bank. Then on top of that, I don't want to say, hey, I want some additional money that's unassigned. So my three months of bills went to being unassigned, or three months of just extra money that I don't want to have on hand.
Yeah, that's like the money you're saving or you might want to buy.
Right.
A new car.
He doesn't need a car.
Not anymore.
My, I do, my, um, so, so I've got, I've got, let's say that's ten thousand dollars a month, or ten thousand dollars total. I would think, let's say now I've got eleven thousand dollars, and then, okay, I could take a thousand dollars of my savings and then add that to a project, you know, I want to, I want to put new decking board on my deck. But what it sounds like, I heard Mr. Peterson say, is the rating agencies are looking at, you're ju- just covering my basic bills and whatever else I want to keep aside, coming unassigned. But I'm hearing, I'll say that might not actually be the case. So in my situation, are you taking away from my, my extra money is put aside and not just my, just my unassigned, but adding it to this without bringing it back in? So we say, okay, I'm going to, I am going to dip into that unassigned and I'm going to spend, I'm going to do, uh, I'm going to spend it all this, this period. So now I've only got if, just my bills and that doesn't count if my, you know, I've got to buy a new car because that's not perfect.
Pinchot.
Yeah, I, I want to do an upgrade, I want to do a capital, you know. So are you taking that three thousand, which now I've got to build that three thousand back up again to get to, to my goal?
I think I want to say yes. So you still have.
Okay, so I still, I can still pay my bills.
You could still, you still have your nest, or non-nest egg, but you still have your reserve for emergencies.
Well, no, I just have, I can make my bills every month, but I can't.
He wants the money, so.
But if the tree falls on my fence and now I have to do the fence, I don't have that money.
It's a little different, I think, because it's.
That's what I'm trying to understand, how.
You have your bills, you have yours, your, your.
On a rainy day, something.
Reserve, your rainy day, and then you've been saving money for the car. You've got enough money now, you need the car, you buy the car. You still have your bill amount and your reserve.
Do we? Because I think that, that's all.
Yeah, it's, it's, the total number is smaller if you use your, your, um, your, the amount that you had reserved for your car. Now you spent it on the car. So you, so your total number, so you have three piles that added up to thirty thousand, now you only have twenty because you used ten for the car.
But I'm, I'm.
How much do we have in reserve right now?
We have about a total of about, oh, forty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
And that's.
About twenty of it is in unassigned.
Unassigned forty.
No, total forty, unassigned twenty.
About.
Let me, let me try this. Again, you're right, Manny, you got three pockets, right? The first pocket I'll deal is a small one, the three percent of budget is called revenue stabilization fund. It's there for revenue stabilization. So if we have a one or two percent decrease in revenues, instead of a thirteen percent increase in revenues, you can dip into that to stabilize your annual operating revenues, that's the purpose of that. And we know, we have known evils out there. We know there's this, we know there's that, so we assign money against it. Let's say, when it comes up, we'll have the money because we're assigning money toward known evils that are assigned. That is the unknowns, the complete unknowns. Light, an earthquake in Louisa, in mineral, and it destroys one of the new schools. If that happens in here, Miko, they struggle to check out of the petty cash. You know, fifty million for a new school, they just go, okay, fine, that's, that's decimal dust.
Great.
We just learned it costs fifty million for a new school and we just learned we only have nineteen available for unknown evils. That's not even going to build one wing in a new school. So when we talk about the unassigned, trying to carry all the water for an unknown evil, a small rural county like ourselves, a school is a big number. A large Chesterfield or Miko, they could, they could, you know, Virginia could build a college campus for not even, you know, miss the money, but for us, it's a big number. And that's why we have outsized reserves is because there's big numbers out there that are unknown that could destabilize the whole thing. And that's why we're where we are. And we took that in front of the rating agencies and we said, we can stabilize our revenues, we got our projects funded, and we got a pile that's unassigned in case something bad happens. And they say, okay, good, that looks like a proven setup. If we spend all those assigned dollars and cut our reserves in half, or if we let the unassigned win though in terms of the percentage of our overall budget, because the budget's growing and we're not growing it, now we're weakening ourselves financially, that's all. And at some point, you can hit across that point. But right now, the way it's set up is they said, okay, you know, you guys are in good shape because you've got stabilized revenues, known evils, and if something bad happens, it's going, it could be a big number, a school, a couple firehouses. There's your, there's your, there's your big number pot. And it has to be on a percentage of our budget, has to be much larger than larger counties because a school is a much bigger percentage of our budget than it is for larger counties. That explains why we are where we are. I'm telling you more than I've said all day, but stop pontificating here.
So we have.
And these conversations are very healthy, by the way, and they're, and they're great to have because we, we don't regret to have them, so it's basically.
It's nice and, nice and, right.
So we have nineteen point six million unassigned, which is twenty-eight percent of our budget, current budget, not twenty-three, we couldn't look at that.
And policy says what?
Policy says twenty-five percent, we have, we're at twenty-eight.
Okay.
Uh, we have nineteen point three million assigned, we don't have a policy on that side. And then we have two point one million revenue, revenue stabilization.
And that's three.
So we really have.
And policy will match a three percent.
Yeah.
And we're at three percent.
Yeah.
Go back to that unassigned, you said target's twenty-five or twenty-eight, so we're a little over, right?
Yes.
That year end, twenty-one, twenty-two, because we're going into twenty-three.
That's year end, twenty-one, twenty-one.
The year they just said.
Twenty-one.
So as, as we approve the twenty-three budget at year end, are we going to have, that's two years later, are we going to, unless, because thirteen percent growth this year and then.
I'm supposed to rely really far during my presentation.
Yeah, just, uh, are we going to have, are we still going to have twenty-eight percent after two more years of growth? Because that's twenty-twenty-one numbers.
Twenty-eight percent or twenty-five percent? For policy.
Twenty-four point nine nine, I see.
No, I think he's just saying, are we going to hit it?
Yeah.
Did the sun shine, we should be moving twenty-eight to thirty and then when the recession hits, draw it back down to twenty-five. You know, here we are talking, talking about, well, it's twenty, we can draw it down to twenty-five now and then when recession hits, then what? I mean, the whole idea is, you know. I think, I guess get this, I don't.
No, but I think.
So what's the action?
Yeah, I was just saying, where do we go from here? Because if you're, if you're pushing that contingent line either to levels, then, then I think, I'm kind of seeing from Ken's thinking is that where, if you're going to budget, if you're going to balance a CIP budget with those numbers, then you almost have to think in terms of, well, how are we going to keep the fund? Now, I know you said you don't have an item and there's an end of the year process, but that kind of cuts against, if we're using this to balance a CIP, then, but we don't see any room to, because the budget's going to continue to grow, we know that, so we should plan to continue to grow the, the reserve funds.
Because right now, what are we doing this year, twenty-three?
Right.
Right, I mean, you're only adopting twenty-three, this is.
If we don't have, we don't spend it.
To your point, to your point, we're going to, we're going to a change in the year.
Absolutely.
But I think then it kind of makes this, I really like the idea of having a, a five-year CIP that when we say it's balanced, that it really is meaningfully balanced.
Right, this isn't balanced. If that happens exactly the way it's presented, we're not going to have enough money because we can't grow the reserves in relation to the budget.
Well, we don't know that, we don't know what our surplus is really.
Ken.
But you're saying, you, you said you maxed those out, you had to cut things, so you're, you're kind of maxing that contingent number out just in your conservative projections, right?
Right, right. So it, it won't be more than this probably.
We're budgeting it based on our means. At the end of the year, you guys have the choice to say, okay, you, you, we're going to build it, balance back up to twenty-eight percent with a new seventy-two million dollar general fund budget, so we need to allocate a certain amount to the reserve. And that's your choice and something else will have to be cut.
You just have to look at your, at your CIP. If you get there and this is exactly where you are, there's going to be stuff on your CIP you can't do.
This is a balanced budget without maintaining our reserve levels.
We don't know that.
There's no increase in reserve levels here, but the budget's increasing every year. So we know that.
But you don't know what the surplus is.
But you've matched your surpluses out.
We think we have, I mean, we don't know. We don't know what surplus, what a surplus is till the end of the year, you know? So.
Well, the, well, the more you max that out, the more then we're going to have things have to fall off the CIP. And if we tell the schools or we plan on something for a different department two or three years out, and it's going to be a lot, it's going to be, that's going to be very difficult. The CIP is gonna be very difficult.
But that's point.
But in the past, we have, the the things that we've done with the surplus was paying cash for things that were in the CIP short term. Might be three years from now, four years from now, that was in the CIP, that wasn't necessarily designated to be paid cash. It could have been paid for other ways. So we've been doing the short-term projects, the things like the treasurer's office over here. We paid all of that out of out of reserves. And we did it sooner than it was supposed to be done. So it took it out of the CIP that we would have had to budget for in the future, but we did it out of reserves. If we get to the end of the year and our reserves are down, then we don't do that. We take those reserves, we set it aside, and we don't fund certain things in the CIP with cash, with cash.
Let me ask if that, is that ac- is that accurate, when he said that that tre- like this example, the treasurer's office, was that in the CIP? And then if we were able to take it out and we were able to cash, pay cash for it?
Yes, yes.
So it was, it was.
Like $1,000,000 for all that.
It was somewhere in the CIP and and we were able to pay cash for it beforehand, it dropped out?
Right, right.
Yeah, like when the annual CIP like that comes up, you get two choices. You can say, we know it was coming, we have a sign balance for it, let's spend the assigned and draw down our reserves. Or you can say, oh, we have an operating surplus that can cover that CIP. For the last five or six years, we've been covering the CIP current year, the recurrent, the five or six out of operating surplus, which allowed us to then maintain the level of reserves and not draw down every year by by funding the CIP out of the reserves, if you will. So you're gonna fund it out of reserves, which means you're gonna draw down your reserves over time, or you're gonna fund it out of operating surplus and maintain reserves.
And or you fund it in the year that it's gonna be done in the operating budget. So if you fund it in the operating budget, if you're able to do that.
But you don't, you don't, you you don't, you, the operating bud, the operating budget, because we do a balanced budget, shouldn't account for should be, this is what it costs to run our operations.
Yeah, but we always have.
I would, it it comes from.
That's what that formula is.
Yeah, I I understand.
Yeah, I would argue our operating budget, you know, pays for everything that we do on an operating budget. And we know every year we have five or six million of not operating every year. So should that be, as a line right below our operating, say, here's operating and then here's the done operating CIP every year, that's a baseline of five or six. Not a school or a firehouse.
Right.
I wonder about the baseline, if we just, you know, must be divided by six, or should that be somewhere in there that says, okay, if we wanna get to it?
Exactly right.
If you wanna balance your fully allocated budget every year, you've gotta put that in there somewhere. And that would include allocating some to the reserves to maintain and also covering the CIP recurring, you know? Then you get into a true balanced budget, and that's what we've been doing for the last five or six years. It's worked really well.
I don't know if we've ever had, I mean, we've done it in the end, but I don't know if we've ever had a line item, a line item to put it, to put money in. I think it's just that at the end of the year, we always do, so we always put money in. I don't think there's been a line item in our budget that said, uh, 10% or 5%.
But but let's 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 assume it's not this board. Let's assume a board comes and says, oh, we're overtaxing everybody, $6 million a year. Like.
Then you become like every other county.
Well, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter where the money is. They wanna get the money back, they can do it from anywhere.
I understand.
Well, but I think, I think, I think where you're going with, I like where you're going with it because to your point right now, there's policy and then there's what we've been doing, and they don't line up. Might we, might we line up the policy with what we've been doing?
Right.
So at least then, a future board or this board would have to intentionally take a step to change policy
Exactly.
as a step towards doing what we think would would be would be.
Right, cuz cuz just I want to, if just do, if I if I don't say, hey, I'm gonna carve off a certain amount of my my income to go to savings, then I'm only gonna be paying my bills and I'm gonna be living by means, just to to my means the rest of my life. I wanna say, no, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take 10% off the top for savings, 10% goes to my tide, and then I've already got my three, three months of bills in the bank, I'm good to go. And as the 10% gets brought in, but if I don't say that, I'm never gonna do it. If I don't say I'm putting that part of that budget is going towards a CIP, again, as we sit around the table, we get it, we agree with it. But I'm also thinking, we have a different board, it's not gonna be this fiscally responsible.
All right, and in fiscal year '24, we have $350,000 in the CIP, a courthouse complex renovations. Where's that money coming from?
Um, that would be coming from
The 4.3.
The 5.4.
Which is from the savings, the savings we think we're going to have.
Oh, yeah, the 24.
Right, exactly.
All right, so that comes out of our circles.
And that's your annual CIP.
What's that?
Savings.
Annual recurring CIP.
No, well, it's the savings that we're going to budget for. It's not savings, it's the money we're gonna budget for next year.
But if we don't have a line.
So we budget for the $350,000 in our next year's budget.
Right.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. If we're budgeting for these things and yet then we tave, pay, pay for them with the reserve, with the uh
Right, with surplus.
the surplus, then we take them out of our CIP and that reduces the, what we need in the future budget. So we aren't robbing, well, if 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 we do that, $350,000 in the next year for the courthouse complex renovations, that's in the CIP for '24.
Right.
If we pay for it out of, out of, uh, say, uh, the excess at the end of the year, then we don't have to budget for the next year, correct?
It's either use the same.
It's like, it'll come out.
It's either pay for it that way or pay for it with the assigned monies that were in the CIP.
But how often?
And you're drawing down reserves.
How often do we, how often, how often do we do 350, 375, 500? How many times do we do those out of allocated money?
Well, we know, I mean, we.
We draw down the reserves.
Some of the planning, yeah, some of the planning we will do for the school came out of assigned, assigned balance.
But come for 3, 5, 6, 700,000? Or is it 4.5 million, 2.5 million?
I, I wonder.
Yes, my point is, what we've been doing with this, we haven't been taking 4.5 million dollars out of the excess at the end of the year and paying for something in cash. We've been taking a bunch of small CIP items.
You know, we have.
We've been spending, we're spending four years.
Spending 4 to 5 million.
4 to 5 million a year.
Right. Out of excess that was in the CIP. So that comes out of the CIP.
Well, it's it's not really excess. These, if you look at '23, '24.
I need a picture.
I think we need another work session.
'23, '24, '25 is based on a 4% increase in revenues.
Yeah, I, I think.
Right, 4.5, 4%.
Do we, do we, okay, let's, let's, but we're here. But do we need another work, another session?
It does not have to be, you know.
I think, I think maybe, I'm beginning to think that maybe this conversation, which is a little philosophical, but
Yeah.
came about because you've dropped reserves and you've now put a contingent on the previous year savings. Have you ever in the past used reserves to balance our CIP? If you've not, then that's the change that you see that's making us uncomfortable.
She does it every year.
Pw, we're using.
I know at the end of the year, we do it, but you're balancing the future CIP based on reserves now. Have you done that in the past, balancing future CIP with reserves?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Every year.
With assigned.
We've always done.
So then why, why did you drop the reserves line and start calling it contingent on previous year savings?
Just cuz it's contingent. We don't know that it'll be there, you know, I mean.
But was that.
But I do know it'll be there this year.
Wasn't that always the case with reserves?
I, you know, we would say, what would, I think, if we had it projected, what are our reserves going to be year by year? If we have, if we see that, if we had that.
Well, we have, that's yes. That's what, that's what is right there.
So we're saying, no, no, that's saying, that's saying what revenues we're gonna put towards these things. That's not what our revenues are going to be. If you have, okay, we've got this 19 in the bank, it's projected for '23 through '27 to be this this much, then we would know what percentage it is.
But it needs to be based on whatever the budget is.
Yes, I see.
If our budget is bigger next year, it'll be bigger.
Yes.
Or scarier.
Scarier.
But see, my my concern is here, we went, okay, we have 4 million for in '22, '23, 4 million for roughly. Okay, then, now, '24, that's a 24% increase. The next year, another 15% increases. The next year, another 22% increase. Have we been increasing 15 to 22%? I don't think so.
Now, we've been staying pretty steady, and I I think that will help too, is I'll show you um, a history of what we've done in the past.
That's, I think that's what's bothering me. That should be around 4 million. Right.
And um, and, you know, we've pretty consistently spent five or six million dollars on the CIP every year.
Every year. Yeah, what we've been doing is we're working really well. We need to decide on policy and philosophy, and then it'll translate into the numbers.
Right. Yes.
What we've been doing is generate a surplus of 7 million, draw down a sign to pay for 7 million projects, take the 7 million surplus and assign those to new projects, maintain your reserves, cash funds our CIP,
Right.
doesn't deteriorate our financial position over time.
Right.
So is our policy to cash fund the CIP, annual, annual CIP portion and maintain the reserves? Is our, is our policy, maintain the reserves and cash fund this the CIP portion? Somebody got a potato in the jar. And and then do we wanna fill our reserves while the sun's shining and deplete them during recession? Those are kind of big policy decisions. Cash fund the CIP, maintain the reserves over time as a percentage of budget, which is what we've been doing for 10 years. Now, when your budget's growing 2% a year, it's real easy. When your budget grows 13% to 15% a year, it's a lot harder because you gotta allocate some real money. When it's 2%, you know, it's just, you know, rounding.
It's just a little bit, yeah.
But now, that's why I raised it this year, not every year, is because it's a bigger number and it's gonna if left, if left unattended for a few years, could drift us out of alignment.
So, Barbara, I'm sorry. So FY '22 is in process, 4.4, almost 4.4.
Right.
That's what we have taken out in reserves, because that's revenue. So I mean, we have reserve bucket, 4.4 is what we've taken out of reserves so far this year?
Yeah, in fact, it might be higher, but but again.
But but that's, yeah, that's what that number represents is.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. When you do that, are you looking to see if we're on track to grow our unassigned and assigned reserve funds? Because you, I know it's a chew up at the end of the year, but obviously you're looking at things to see, will we be able, I I, and this is a genuine question.
Right, so.
Are you looking to to make sure our our unassigned, our reserve funds grow consistent with the budget when you, when you're tracking how we're drawing down reserves?
So I'm gonna answer that a long way. Um, I agree with what Mr. Peterson just described is, you know, you assign that 7 million, you spend it, so to speak, and then you fill it back up. So so we've got this bucket of 40 million dollars divided into different parts. So do I plan on us breaking even this year? Essentially doing what Mr. Peterson said, assigning that 4.396, using it, and then filling it back up again? Yes, I do. If for whatever reason, this unassigned hasn't grown enough and the bucket is still 40 million, the first thing we would do is increase that unassigned amount and decrease the assigned amount um, to allocate more to the unassigned.
To meet the policy. But but we, but but if, but if, would you, would you let it lower from 40 million?
Um.
And does your budget kind of break?
I don't have heartburn over that. Mr. Peterson does. So again.
We had a conversation about that.
Um, and and I have asked, I shouldn't quote him here, but um, I have, I have spoken to our financial advisor and he said, yes, it would be okay to spend down some of that, you know, uh, it would not be ruinous to our AAA. Would you wanna do that every year? No, no. But, you know, you would.
Yes, it's it's a whole lot easier to maintain reserves than to try to replenish them and build them up. To build them up, you have to spend less than you take in. To maintain them, you simply only have to spend what you take in. It's easier to maintain than it. So when you say, well, we can draw it down 5 or 10 and still not take a hit, trying to put that 5 or 10 back is the hard part. Keeping it is the easier part. My agita, my heartburn comes from, the budget's growing at 13% and we're taking 4 million out of reserves. 12%. The budget's growing at 12% and we're drawing down a reserve and this is as good as it gets, the sun's shining. Is that good fiscal policy at this point in time? I don't know.
Well, this year isn't the as good as it gets year, it's next year because that's when, you know, the assessments actually come to fruition, but.
Point taken. Drawing down a reserve while the budget's growing like a weed and anyway. That's, we can have more conversation about that.
We're we're actually closer than we seem on on our philosophy, but uh.
We are a lot closer than it seems, Mark. I appreciate everything you do to keep us straight. Uh, she's phenomenal. A big piece of why we got where we are today, so.
Thank you very, very much, very much.
Well, we're not, but we can be.
No, no, what's next?
What? We got more.
No, we are done. We're done. We're done. There it is.
Oh, good.
We're done.
Um, I didn't, we didn't cover a lot of material, but we're done. So, so I know it's not on the agenda, but I I I, we do have a citizen here. Mr. Lau, would you like to say something?
Maybe.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we will be in recess until our 6:00 PM for our dinner break and be back for our public appearance at 6:00 PM. And Barbara, this is very helpful.
Yes, this is good.